Eight, wow. The last meeting of the year, maybe that's a good thing. December 8th, 2021 Franklin School Board Meeting to Order. It has been properly posted. Can we please stand for the, oh, sorry. Roll call, please, Mrs. Larson.
Dr. Beer, here. Dr. Khan.
Here.
Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
We are all present.
Great, thank you. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
A motion's been made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, school presentation. Forest Park Middle School. Mr. Mizziak, please. Welcome, new people.
I don't have to press the button, do I? Thank you for letting us be here tonight. I have Mr. Brandis with me and Ms. Rosinski with me. I'd also like to thank my teachers who have joined me tonight. Mr. Adams is here. Mr. Johnson is here. I saw Mrs. Crabbe, who's back there. Mrs. Moore is here. Who am I forgetting? That's everybody. That is everybody. They're here in support of their students who are presenting to you tonight. So I would like to first thank you for the opportunity to share the work that we're doing at Forest Park. I would also like to thank the students of Forest Park who are joining us tonight to highlight the encore opportunities we have at Forest Park. Amiko, Kyle, Sophia, Krishna, Adriana, Eliza, and Prisha were recommended by their teachers to present tonight, not only for their exceptional work, but also for their passion, also for the passion each has shown in their given class.
In 2018, as we began to prepare to transition to the new Forest Park, as a staff, we defined core elements of the middle school experience. In planning for programming, we identified high expectations for all learners, educating the whole child and providing our students an opportunity to explore as essential components of middle school programming. As we worked to make Forest Park a better place to learn, we have not lost sight of the core elements we used to build the programming of the new Forest Park. We worked to provide students the opportunity to explore by engaging with a wide range of topics and content and by providing experiences and classes that may not have been part of their previous school experience.
Our encore classes are essential in supporting and fostering an environment where all students become life, career, and college-ready. Our encore classes allow students to embrace challenges, persist in the face of setbacks, tackle complex challenges, collaborate with their peers, and encourage them to dance across the disciplines. Regardless of the content area, the goal for our learners is to be able to transfer their knowledge, understandings, and skills. Providing students with a broad range of experiences allows students to develop more durable understanding and provides students opportunities to apply what they know in new contexts, the heart of transfer.
Our encore classes give students the ability to not only explore ideas, but also to experience different conditions in which they can test their skills. Our encore classes open our students' minds to the range of experience through which they can explore their potential. Tonight, our student presenters will share with you their experiences in some of the encore classes, what they're learning about, and show you a few examples of their exceptional work. I would like to introduce you to our first student presenters, Amiko and Kyle, who will share with you what they're up to in Tech Ed.
Sir, you're welcome to come around and get a picture of their faces if you'd like. Please.
It looks like nice Christmas gifts.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amiko Anderson.
And I'm Kyle Timmer.
We are here tonight to tell you about some of our experiences in Tech Ed and why we enjoy this class so much.
I love Tech Ed and having the chance to make and use my hands to make projects out of nothing into something. Take this, for example, my car. I had one block of wood and learned how to safely and effectively use all tools, like a table saw and a belt sander. A lot of the tools we use, we will need later or sooner in life. By completing both my car and my rocket project here, I learned aerodynamics and manipulating variables to benefit another or impact the force of wind mostly on it. With our science, we learned simple electronics and learned more complex circuits just this past quarter and automation and robotics. Speaking of aerodynamics and mostly my rocket, it has sparked a great interest of mine and that is now a hobby and eventually my dream job of an aerospace engineer. And on that note, I would like to hand it off to my partner, Amiko.
I love Tech Ed because I love to build things that are awesome and I love to be able to use my hands, with hands-on learning and being able to use rough materials to be able to create something awesome. Tonight, I would like to share with you my box that I made while in Tech Ed. Even though it is an extra project, it is fun to be able to take one piece of wood and build an actual box using the tools in Tech Ed room, that the teachers went through on how to use and what to do and what not to do with the machine. I made something that is pretty cool, where we are able to put our own interests on the top of the box with an awesome laser engraver. While working on my glow sign, me and my friends worked together and used each other's skills when me and my friends were making our glow signs. We all had something that we were good at. Like, I was really good at wiring all the light bulbs together. My friend was really good at sanding the mirror and my other friend was really good at filing the wood. And when one of us didn't know how to do one thing, the one who was really good at it would come and help them. Like, one time when I was making my mirror, I didn't know how to file, to sand the mirror. And so, my friend who was really good at it taught me how to sand it. He told me what grits to use, what not to use, what to do at certain times. And this helps build relationships in my Tech Ed.
Thank you for listening to Amiko and I share why we love and are so passionate towards Tech Ed.
And now I'd like to invite up Sophia.
Hi, I'm Sophia and I play the French horn. And today, I'm going to talk about band class and what I like about it. In band class, we all play instruments that are in three main sections: brass, such as trumpets, baritones, trombones, and French horns. Hi, today I'll be playing a part from Little March by Leopold. Woodwinds, such as flutes, oboes, clarinets, and saxophones. And lastly percussion, which includes drums, bells, snares, et cetera. I enjoy taking band class because when you play an instrument by yourself, it can sound amazing and all, but when you're with a whole group, the sounds all mix together and you get this one great whole sound. In band, we have recently been learning about different note scales, articulation, and dynamics. Next, I will be playing a short clip from a video of me playing the song Little March. This is a piece that we have been working on for our WSMA solos, a song competition that will be held in March. Hi, today I'll be playing a part from Little March by Leopold Mozart. Thank you for watching. Now I would like to talk about how band can help me in the future and how it has already helped me. Band has helped me build lots of different skills, so far, besides learning how to play an instrument. It has taught me to stay calm when you don't understand things right away, practice to make things better and more understandable, and it has built up my confidence. If I hadn't grown my confidence, I wouldn't have been able to speak here tonight. I would have been too afraid, but thanks to band, that won't be an issue anymore. Thank you for listening.
I turned it off. And now I'd like to invite up Krishna.
Good evening, everyone. I am Krishna from 7th grade and I'm going to say a few words about digital media tonight. Digital media is designed to enrich students about the infinitely changing digital world. Our podcast and video project comes under this category. Podcasts are convenient and easy to consume. They're also a means of distributing information across various social networks. Podcasts can be used to transmit information to an audience in an economic way. We can share personal experiences, knowledge videos, which can both be inspirational and informative, like say, for example, TED Talks. In digital media, we learned about programming, which is useful in life. The world is evolving in the spaces of digital currency, like blockchain, artificial intelligence, and machine learning. Essentially, all these require advanced programming skills. Programming. In digital media, we learn Scratch, which is the foundation to acquiring the skill set. In class, we experimented with multiple skills programming. This includes animation and game design. We're now going to run you through some examples we designed. The following video shows some projects we created. For example, the beginning shows our animation coding projects, Dance and Cat, followed by our game Epic Adventure projects, and then our podcast and video projects will be shown. Enjoy.
Hello, everybody. Today, we're going to be talking about AI. In this video, we're going to be covering three subtopics: what is AI and what does it mean? How does AI work? And why is AI the future? And why not to be frightened by it? Enjoy.
What I like about this class: I couldn't think of a better teacher other than Mrs. Crabbe for this subject. Throughout the course, she encouraged you to experiment, learn, and code. In addition, I look forward to business fundamentals and personal finance because it's important for us in the future. And also, we need more Elon Musk from Franklin. Thank you.
And next, we have Adriana.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adriana Rios and I am an 8th grader and I'm here to explain the importance of art all around us and how the skills of art are useful in other parts of life. I have a passion for anything art-related, whether it's hands-on projects like sculpting and painting or whether it's more on the technology side, like video editing and photography. Art is something that a lot of people take for granted and some even think it isn't important at all. But what they don't realize is that the art is all around us. We are constantly interacting with it, whether it be mentally or physically. Art is important because it is what builds the world around us. I've learned that art really brings out a story, whether it's a personal story, a global issue, history, politics, religion, or culture. They are all important aspects in our world today that sometimes just can't be explained in words. During each project I've completed in class, I've always run into some sort of challenge or problem, which I've had to either work around or add on a new idea to my original one. I think this is a good skill to have because not only will I have to use problem-solving skills in art, but in other future classes and jobs as well. Art pushes me to be more creative or outside-the-box kind of problem solver. Art has taught me to be calm and have a different perspective on things, especially when it comes to generating ideas and also being open to others' ideas. I know this may not be the case for everyone when it comes to art, but personally, it has helped me when I've been stressed out over school assignments or when I've had to work in a difficult group for a group project. Art has made me develop the habit to be able to step back in stressful situations and look at it from a different point of view. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to share with you not only why I love art, but also why it is important to have in school.
And lastly, we have Eliza and Prisha. They really wanted to share with you recipes and I said, "Ah, we might not be able to do that just yet."
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Eliza.
And I'm Prisha and we both are in 6th grade. It's a great honor to be here to talk about why we love Face class so much and why it's important.
Everyone entered class really excited about cooking, but Ms. Challen, our Face teacher, kept it suspenseful by starting sewing. At first, not many kids were really interested or confident in sewing, but by the end of the unit, everyone saw how important it was and the ways we could use it. In sewing, we learned how to repair rips and fix buttons. At first, I wasn't exactly excited by sewing either, but by the end, it was one of the really fun units.
In Face, we also learned about nutrition. Did you know that there are nutritional fakers? Like enriched grains are giant fakes? This is a fact that we learned in Face. For example, mostly grain breads or breads that are brown in color may not be the healthiest choice. The brown color could be molasses or dye that change the color. Also, canola oil is healthier than vegetable oil due to trans fats that cause heart problems. So, we also learned how to read nutrition labels that show us if the food we eat is healthy and nutritious for us. We also learned about the many different ways companies package foods to make their products seem healthier, but they're not.
The absolute best part of Face was cooking.
When we started the unit, did we start with cooking? Nope. We started with washing dishes. Someone asked me if I enjoyed washing dishes before I came to Face. I said no. However, from the experience I had in Face, I'm now really comfortable with washing dishes.
The cooking unit included learning how to maintain and tell kitchen appliances apart. When we did cook, we focused on team cuisine.
So, we made popcorn, granola, pancakes, brownie in a mug, chex mix, cornbread muffins, sweet muffins, Rice Krispie treats, and much more.
Although many of these recipes are simple and delicious foods, all of them help us understand the important parts of cooking, following recipes, and measuring correctly.
This class has really inspired us a lot and made us passionate about cooking. Now, we both love to cook at home and sometimes even make dinners for our families.
So, from the information we gained from Face, we were able to transfer our knowledge from the class and use that knowledge in our daily lives. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to thank all of the teachers and students who are essential in making this night possible. I told all the students, had I been asked to present to the school board when I was in middle school, that I would have freaked out and said no, but each and every student that we asked to present tonight accepted it and they were thrilled about it. And you can tell by their presentations, they were very excited to be here and they're being recognized for the exceptional work that they do on a daily basis. I'm thankful that they were able to be here because they kind of give you an insight into the depth and complexity that my middle schoolers have and their ability to demonstrate their understanding in a wide variety of fields. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight and providing the students with an opportunity to showcase their work and the work of the staff of Forest Park.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I say this after all the presentations, but there's a reason we have you guys first. You're free to stay for the entire meeting, but feel free to not stay if you don't feel like you want to.
You did a great job.
Absolutely.
It seems very comfortable. It's a talking head already.
Yes.
I gotta get better. Sometimes those videos don't work. I need to up it in a little bit. You're up to that pretty young lady. So, please, if you want to sort of present it, I will hold back. Right?
Time to be ready.
I know. Present it. I think we figured out why the room was so good.
Participants under this agenda item must be residents of Franklin Public Schools, parents or guardians of Franklin Public School District students, and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. I have two tonight, but I saw a gentleman that sometimes speaks. Did you, Mr., did you want to speak tonight as well? Or not? Okay, I will call. You can come up after the other two. I saw you were late and didn't get a chance to sign in. Mary Yank, please.
Really? After that? After that? My name is Mary Yank, 5731 West Cascade Drive. First of all, I want to say how grateful I am over the past few years how many measures have been taken to keep our buildings safe, reconfiguring lobbies, having a screening process, really, and probably many things that I'm not even aware of that have really served to make our buildings safe for our students to learn in. I actually had a meeting with my daughter and one of her teachers last week and, of course, to get buzzed in, I had to say who I was and why I was there. Then I gave my driver's license. Then I get a sticker. Then I get an escort to the room where, you know, we were meeting. So, I really feel very confident and comfortable and always have felt that way, frankly, that my kids are safe in school. Having said that, I'm assuming that all the parents of the children of the 22 mass shootings since August also felt that their students were safe and that they trusted that they were, you know, going to come home that day. So, I did a quick Google search and there have been 30 school shootings this year and 22 since August 1st. So, I guess my, what I want to ask is, I mean, given the proliferation and the easy access to guns in this country, given the ongoing pandemic that's definitely taking a toll on children's mental health and well-being, I'm wondering if it's possible to maybe emphasize more, like in the newsletter, the counseling that's available? I'm not, I know it was really well-publicized when it first started, but I'm not sure that new parents or parents who maybe just weren't as aware that this is available. I'm wondering if there could be more publicized availability of the counseling that's available at school because frankly, it is an amazing thing that we have offered in our district and I hate to think that a parent or a student isn't aware of it and is struggling. And it's so easy to access, I speak from personal knowledge, that it's super easy to access that counseling and it's wonderful. So, I'm also wondering, and maybe this isn't something that can be done, but I'm wondering if there can be some type of publish, I'm sorry, something published that tells us what the district's practices and protocols are for dealing with things like the child in Michigan. Obviously, hindsight is 2020, but it seemed like there were some opportunities that were missed to address the student and perhaps alleviate what ended up happening. So, I'm wondering if there's any way that what Franklin does can be, I don't know, in some way communicated to families so that they are reassured that Franklin is not going to be the next district that's being offered thoughts and prayers because there was a shooting. So, again, I don't know if any of that is feasible, but I just would like to bring it out to your attention. So, thank you very much.
I'll comment on that just shortly. We do have, we do in closed session talk about safety practices and the board signs off on it. But for obvious reasons, those aren't all public. So, maybe Dr. Miller can speak to it later when she makes her comments, but we're confident in the safety and we do talk about it, as you probably know. Michelle Winkie, please.
Hey. So, I debated whether or not to come today or not. I was told I didn't need to come anyways. Last time I spoke, no, I'll go get to that later. One of the middle school teacher, I don't know who it was, he said that they have high expectations of our students. And I'd like to just tell you, last week, my son came home, who was in the advanced 8th grade math class, and said that the teacher said, and I'm, his, what he's telling me, I'm telling you. So, there might be a little breakdown, but he said that the teacher did not put in whatever their summative, whatever the quiz thing is, into Power School because so many kids got a bad grade and she didn't want them to have a bad grade in their class. How is that letting parents know what's going on in that classroom, grade-wise? I had to email her to get my son to bring his test home because she wouldn't, doesn't let anything leave the classroom. So, high expectations, sure, great, wonderful. We're just not going to put our bad grades into the system. Great. So, there was just one thing. I'll go to my, last time I spoke, Dr. Miller and me had been emailing back and forth and maybe there was a miscommunication, but I said I'm going to correct it if I was wrong or not. And I said, she invited me to a meeting and she didn't show up. So, I'm just going to read this and you can take it for what you want. She had said, "I appreciate your follow-up in this email regarding your comments at the last board meeting. I'd like to suggest to, that a time be arranged to meet with you to share more information, answer your questions, to provide support in your homeschooling." So, I sent her my availabilities and whether this is clarity or not, but I'm just going to put it out there because we had our personal conversation afterwards. It said, "Hi, Michelle, thanks for getting back to me with some of the times to meet. I will work on setting up the meeting and get back to you either today or Monday. I'm setting this meeting up with Dr. Mowbray and Mrs. Cody as I feel they are best equipped to provide answers to your specific curriculum questions to provide you with the support you might need." Whether there was clarity or not, I don't know. Maybe it should have been a little bit clearer. I'm just going to say, I said if I made a mistake or not, I think it was a miscommunication, but I'm going to correct it, say what it is. So, now it's on the record. So, I wasn't trying to beat you up or anything like that. But just clear, because the But just clear, because the first email said it was between me and you, and then it wasn't. And then lastly, the other thing was. High expectation. Sorry, I just put my notes on here. I don't know. It's just, I don't understand, like, why I have to specifically ask for my kid's stuff to be sent home. This is why my children fell behind in school. This is why last time I said, "We're struggling," my daughter's struggling. We're struggling now because I'm incapable of teaching my children, especially at an elementary school level. I'm struggling, my daughter's struggling, because I had to buy curriculum at what was the fifth grade level, and to find out, she couldn't do it because she was so far behind. So, instead of pushing it, I had to go purchase lower-level stuff. That's where my struggles are, not because I'm an inadequate parent who cannot teach my children, and not because it's hard to teach my children. This is the greatest blessing that I have been able to do, to quit my job and stay with my kids. And we have decided to continue with our homeschooling because there is no transparency whatsoever in Franklin with these kids. Nothing comes home. There's no.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad Mary got to not get interrupted by any horse. I just, I'm going to wave my white flag. I don't know if it is, do I give up with you guys? We're not coming back. I don't know. Do I keep fighting? Because maybe it's going to help some parent.
All right. I had to work late tonight and didn't fully prepare for this. It's been a little bit since I've been here because of work, but last time I was here, I had asked all of you to humble yourselves and do some research on masks. That's been my theme here since the beginning, is unmasking our children. How many of you went home and actually looked at the statistics from history? Not all this, since this whole thing started, but what the experts have said prior to this about masks and what they do to our body and the lack of oxygen. Did any of you go home and actually research it unbiasedly? I understand that there's all kinds of misinformation. The right says this, left says that, this person says whatever. Looking at something unbiasedly, I know can be a hard thing to do. But I really am asking you, because this has gone on long enough, the numbers have stayed stable, and at what point are you going to take another vote or open up a discussion to get our kids out of these masks and let them breathe air again? And that's what I want for my children, is to let them breathe. Everything else in Franklin, I expect this to be an A-class school, an A-class district who sets the expectations for the rest of the state. That is my expectations, and that is why we originally sent our kids here. I applaud you and your security. As a security IT guy, the policies and procedures that I have seen, that I have witnessed, are awesome. The easy access to counseling, which we have used, has been amazing, and in most areas, at least at the elementary level where our kids go, is awesome. But at some point in time, you have to let our kids breathe again. The numbers have been good. Even with this new variant that's out there and everything, the numbers are still staying stable in Wisconsin and in Franklin. Our schools here in Franklin have been good. So, I'm asking you to open up the discussion again to get our kids out of these masks. Thank you.
Thank you. I can say that the, that discussion will be on the agenda in the January 12th meeting. All right. Item six, consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. School board announcements. Does any school board member have an announcement? School board calendar, regular board of education meeting, Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00 PM. And that one may be moved to the middle school. That will be on the agenda, that will be posted in schools. Regular board of education meeting, Wednesday, January 26th, 2022, at the ECC. Item nine, district administrator update. Dr. Miller, please.
Good evening, everyone. As we progress through the meeting this evening, I'd like to take a moment to convey both our condolences and support for all the families impacted by the tragedy in Waukesha. I've heard so many stories of how members of the Franklin community have reached out to offer their support and have shown great kindness in this extremely difficult time. I'd also like to convey that it is, as a school community, we are incredibly distressed and heartbroken for the Oxford High School community. This evening, I'll be meeting with the board in closed session to again discuss how we are taking measures to ensure that all students are safe at school every day, and I appreciate your comments this evening, and will think very carefully about how broadly I could share more information without conveying the details, thus allowing someone to understand how we are protecting the children. Our agenda items this evening focus on our data and our goals. Together, they're essential in ensuring that we achieve our mission of ensuring that all students reach their potential. Our state report card represents the work the district has done to continue to be a school district that exceeds expectations despite a worldwide pandemic that's influenced us for 21 months. Speaking of COVID, I'm proud to report that we began the rollout of our onsite testing and test-to-stay option in partnership with Summit Clinical Lab. This program will help us to achieve our goal, which has always been for the last 21 months, of keeping our students in person at school. Last July, when Governor Evers signed the 2123 Bionale budget, he said that he would provide $100 million for schools out of the CARES federal pandemic relief funding provided directly from the state. I'm pleased to announce that on December 2nd, the governor conveyed that the funds for schools would be available. These funds can be spent by each school district for what is needed. We are carefully assessing the use of these additional funds to ensure that they support our coherence plan and are properly used on things that are non-recurring expenses. Finally, I'd like to end on a very positive note by formally recognizing the efforts of the Franklin High School football coaching staff and, of course, our talented athletes for representing themselves and our district and our entire community as state champions. We're also very proud to announce that Coach Lewis Brown was named Football Coach of the Year by the Green Bay Packers and the Wisconsin Football Coaches Association. Coach Brown has been a physical education teacher and community member in Franklin for 30 years. He's very deserving of the award, and we're really fortunate that he coaches and teaches for us. Mr. Hein is working on organizing a recognition for the football team and their families, and will be inviting the board of education to help celebrate that success. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Item 10, reports, presentations, and other school board business. State report card report. Dr. Cohen, please, welcome back. I know you're here occasionally.
Like a bad penny.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. For those of you that don't know, Nick Cohen, learning assessment consultant at CSE6. One of the things that we have the privilege of advising districts around are changes to the accountability systems in the state of Wisconsin, in particular, the state report card. And over the last several years, DPI has continued to make significant adjustments to the state report card, perhaps no more significant than in this past year. And so, Dr. Miller and the district asked me to spend a little time with both the leadership team last month and then all of you this evening, just to talk you through some of the changes to the state report card and provide some thoughts and insights and advice and answer any questions that you might have. You have the full report in board docs, but I'll be referencing a couple pieces of that report this evening, in particular, some sections that I feel like are worth highlighting because they are particularly complex, and they're worth just kind of talking about a little bit with all of you and thinking through how they work. So, I'm going to take it really in three parts. One part, we'll be just talking a little bit about some of the specific changes that occurred. The second is, I'm going to pull up the district report card and just take the four scoring areas that feed into the report card and talk a little bit about each of those, and then I'm going to end with just some results and implications in terms of what it means and how it impacts the rest of the work. Following that, I know Dr. Mo is going to be sharing information with you around the district assessment report, and obviously, there will be much more detail there in terms of the assessments that feed into the report card, and so, an opportunity for you to dive in deeper there and have some of that dialogue. I would start just by pointing out that there were some kind of significant changes initially to the look and feel of the report card overall. This is a side-by-side over the last two report cards. During the pandemic, kind of the height of that pandemic, there was no report card issued. So, the last report card was in 1819, prior to the one that was just issued for 2021. On the left-hand side, you can see the style of that report card and what that looked like, and then on the right-hand side, you can see the new report card in terms of how it was designed. One of the changes that occurred overall is, on the upper right, you're going to see there's a section of the report card that provides just a 400-character limit narrative. Those narratives have been added to the district and the school report cards this year, and they're generated by the district. So, those aren't determined by DPI, just one of the things that they pointed out. The other thing is, you're going to notice that the overall score on the old report card was color-coded, it was kind of predominant within that state symbol, and more recently now, you're going to see that it's been de-emphasized, it's kind of in the middle of the report card now, it's in a white circle, and that's kind of DPI's message to say, we want to start to emphasize some of these scoring metrics that are feeding the overall report card and focus a little less on the overall score. Again, this is just a close-up or example of that 400-character limit message, again, that you would see at the top. Additionally, there were some significant changes to the rating scale this year on the state report card. So, when the report cards were first issued, the left-hand side were the scoring metrics. So, they used, at that time, kind of five different level verbiage, starting with significantly exceeds down to fail to meet expectations, and then a score from 0 to 100, and then they color-coded those different ranges and levels. The five stars were added a couple of years ago through state statute, and so, those kind of stars were there to help, I guess, bring some more clarity and depth to those levels. But the scoring cut scores were changed for the 2021 report card. So, the chart at the right is showing you what the new scores are. You're going to see that that 83 is still the cut for significantly exceeds expectations, but the cut scores for the other rating levels were all lowered. And part of the reason for that is, over the last seven, eight years of the report card, the metrics have changed significantly, the calculations have changed significantly, and DPI has said that the original rating levels were no longer as relevant to the overall score as these new rating levels, and so, they changed those calculations for this year. Additionally, there are a number of data points that feed the state report card. I guess I would start by saying that when possible, the state report card takes into account up to three years of data because it wants to look at a more holistic picture, but it does weight the more recent data more heavily than the older data within the report card. A number of assessments feed the state report card. So, for example, the Wisconsin Forward Exam, which is administered in grades three through eight, feeds in. The ACT Aspire in grades nine and 10, the ACT in grade 11, all feed into that scoring, particularly in the areas of English Language Arts and Mathematics. One thing to point out in terms of the ever-changing landscape of the report card and state assessment is, this will then be the last year of the ACT Aspire Assessment in grades nine and 10, that the Department of Public Instruction is going through a request for proposal process right now to identify a replacement assessment in grades nine and 10. My hunch is it's going to be the pre-ACT, but there are a number of other test companies that are starting to push into that particular space. Additionally, grade three through 11 dynamic learning map assessment data is here. Again, that's for our 1% of students that suffer from a significant cognitive disability and are supported through that assessment. It includes four and seven-year graduation rate data, K-12 chronic absenteeism rate data, and K-1 attendance rate data, and all of that feeds into the report card again over multiple years. Additionally, the four areas of the report card that feed into the primary score are weighted differently depending on a number of different variables. So, if you think about this circle, you can see on the right here, the four areas that are feeding into the report card. The top half makes up about 50%, and the bottom half of that circle makes up about 50%. Achievement and growth make up part of that, right? Achievement and growth in both ELA and math, and it depends, those weights depend on your percentage of low socioeconomic status students. So, the greater the population of low socioeconomic status students in a district, the more growth is weighted because the assumption is that you want to see more progress over time to close gaps with students that are coming in in that particular population. And if, on the other hand, you have a lower population of low SES students, then the achievement metric is weighted more heavily. The break-even point for that is 34%, and so, if a district is at 34% free and reduced lunch or low socioeconomic status, then it's 25/25 across those two metrics. The other two metrics are target group outcomes and on-track for graduation, which typically are 25% of the report card apiece, unless you're a high school, in which case, the other three areas are weighted a little more heavily, and that on-track to graduation metric is at 20%, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a little bit. That said, I did want to spend a little bit of time kind of walking you through some pieces of this, and before I do that, I wanted to start by saying that because there were so many significant changes to the report card this year, it's really difficult, if not impossible, to compare this report card to prior scores. DPI is advised against it for a number of reasons, and so, really, in a number of ways, this becomes a new baseline year around the state report card. Certainly, you could compare to other districts, but you can't really compare anymore year to year within the existing district. So, that said, I wanted to highlight just a couple of pieces. Again, the report goes into more detail, but I thought there were some things worth pointing out. So, this is the district report card. I've moved to the achievement section of the report card here to show you a couple of things. One, you're going to notice that you get both an overall priority area score, and then you get a score for English Language Arts and Mathematics. Additionally, each section gives you this chart, which will show you where the district performed relative to the rest of the state, and so, you can see kind of where in the percentile the district was in that area. Achievement rates straight student performance in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and it's called a points-based proficiency model, meaning across four levels, advanced, proficient, basic, below basic, the better that students perform, the more points that the district earns for that. So, if students are performing at the advanced level, it's a point and a half per student. If they're at the proficient level, it's one. If they're at basic, it's half a point, and if they're below basic, the district gets no points for students that score in those areas. And again, they look at three years of data. One other piece that is worth pointing out in this particular area is, they do provide a demographic breakdown for you in terms of both English Language Arts and Mathematics. What they're showing you here is what that proficiency score out of 100 would be if that was the only population that was scoring into the report card. So, they're saying, within English Language Arts, this is what the score would be for each of these populations, and the same with Mathematics, and then it shows you how that population performed relative to the last state report card, which in this case would have been in 1819. The other thing that it provides is a three-year look then at the data that fed into that overall score, and so, again, you've got these levels of advanced, proficient, basic, below basic. Really quickly, we often throw those words out and don't describe what they mean. So, advanced means a student is more than a grade level ahead. Proficient means they're at grade level. Basic means they're less than a year below grade level, and below basic means they're more than a year below grade level. And so, if you see those designations, that's what it means. You're going to notice that the district had been relatively stable, and obviously, with the pandemic, you're going to see no assessment in 1920. So, over that two years, there was a bit of a slip in both English Language Arts and Math. What I will say is, these slips were fairly significant for a number of districts around the state, and Franklin stayed relatively stable compared to some of those other districts declined as a result of the pandemic. One other thing I would say is, demographics no longer factor into the report card as a solo indicator, and so, this is for information only, it doesn't factor into the scoring. The next section is growth. The growth calculations are not shared by DPI. The growth area measures the progress of a student from one year to another, and so, based on how a student performed on the prior year assessment, it projects a endpoint for that student the following year and says, "This is what they should get as a result of a year's instruction and a year's growth." And then, in English Language Arts and Mathematics, identifies how did the student actually perform on the second round of the assessment. Because there were no state assessments due to the pandemic in 1920, they had to use two years of growth for this group. So, they looked at how this group performed from 1819 to 2021. One of the things that's important about that is, we had a number of students that were here for part of that time and not here for part of that time, and so, those student scores counted 50% for the district they were with and then us. And so those student scores counted 50% for the district they were with, and then us, or vice versa. So if they started with us and left, half that score was attributed to each school or to district. Again, you can see where the district performed in terms of that distribution, in terms of growth. And then you get these tables, because growth is rated on a six-point scale. Three is average. And so if you're seeing these darker boxes, that means each of these populations performed better than average across the state in terms of growth. And if you're seeing this unshaded box, it's saying it was lower. One of the areas that I would point you to, in terms of paying particular attention, is this group of not proficient last year. So this particular population were students who were basic or below basic on the prior assessment. How did they do? Did they grow, right? And generally, we want to see students grow more than a year if they're behind in terms of being identified as basic or below basic, because a year's growth is not going to catch them up. They need more than a year's growth to get there. And so these are populations you want to pay particular attention to in terms of identifying that accelerated growth for students. You're going to see that certainly, we've had accelerated growth in terms of ELA. Mathematics was a little bit more average. And so again, those students are falling a little bit more behind based on that. The third area of the report card, and the one that underwent this most significant change, was target group outcomes. This used to be called closing gaps, and this metric looked at an individual demographic population, like students with disabilities or students of low socioeconomic status. And it used to identify how well that group of students performed relative to the rest of the state. Part of the problem with that metric was, you had to have 20 students in that population in your district or school to be counted. And so you had a number of schools throughout the state where they would have, say, 19 EL students one year and 21 EL students the next year. And so one year, they're all counted in the score, and the next year, they're not. And they were seeing these wild swings in scoring. And so to combat that, they came up with a new metric called target group outcomes. And so what this group measures is it identifies the lowest, they call the bottom quartile, the lowest 25% of performing students on the state assessment from the prior year in ELA, lowest 25% in math. And then it puts them into specific target groups in ELA and math and looks at, how did they perform over the course of that next year? Each year, new target groups are formed, and then they're measured again, and then it just keeps cycling. And so what you're seeing here are the scores for those students. And so what it provides you with is the overall rating level that the students in that target group scored in terms of ELA and math across achievement and growth, and then how everybody else performed that was not in that bottom quartile. Additionally, they monitor absenteeism, attendance, and graduation rate for those students, not based on prior attendance, but based on their prior test scores. So they want to see if your lowest-performing students are attending school or not. And so they're factored into a target group there as well. The final area that's measured is on-track-to-graduation. Again, you can see where the district performs in terms of that breakdown. And then within that, there are a couple of different areas depending on which level you're at. So for elementary, for example, they will measure chronic absenteeism and attendance, which are different. Chronic absenteeism is a student who missed more than 10% of available days within a school year, and that's looked at over three years. Attendance is simply the amount of days the student could have attended versus the amount they did, and then what that overall attendance rate was. And then also, if you're the elementary level, they look at third-grade English Language Arts, because we know through research that this is a critical point in terms of early literacy. If you're a middle school, you're going to not have the third grade, but you are going to have the eighth-grade mathematics, also a critical point in terms of students. And if you're the high school, you're going to have chronic absenteeism, you're going to have graduation rate, and that's it. And because these other scores are not present, that's why this, at the high school level, is weighted a little lower than those other areas are overall. The final area of the report card is not scored, but simply is an attempt to provide a more well-rounded picture of district performance. And so they provide data relative to student participation in post-secondary prep. So things like AP courses, dual enrollment, industry-recognized credentials, work-based learning, and they compare those percentages to the rest of the state. They do the same for arts courses. They look at art and design, dance, music, and theater, and they compare those percentages within a school to the rest of the state. So given that background in those areas, these were the district scores. Again, they're included in the report, but this is the overall scoring kind of on one slide, and I'll give you just a second to take a look there. So just in terms of a couple of other quick pieces, and then we'll open things up to questions. There's been, obviously, interest in the HOC and the impact of the HOC on the overall district report card, given some of the legislation that this body had supported over time. And because of the changes that have occurred to the report card in terms of the scoring metrics, that impact has lowered over time. And you're going to see here that it is still having an impact. One of the areas it has an impact is in the on-track-to-graduation metric, where you're going to see that the district's graduation rate is below the state average. And the reason for that is the impact of the House of Corrections on that data. And overall, you can see the scoring areas that are impacted by the HOC being included in that district data and what the impact is. In the past, the overall score impact has been somewhere in the neighborhood of three to five points. Now it's down to one point to a point and a half, depending on the given year and the amount of students. So again, that has declined over time. One of the other things that was included in the report for you was an overall chart showing the breakdown of CISA 1 and where Franklin performed relative to other schools in the CISA 1 region. This is just the exceeds expectations band. You can see some of the districts that performed close to where Franklin performed overall. Franklin ranked 20th out of 37 districts in CISA 1 that had scoring metrics, and ranked 69th in the state out of 389 districts that had scoring metrics. Additionally, you're going to note that if that one-point increase had occurred, if the HOC data was excluded, it would have put Franklin up a couple of spots around where Germantown is. So just by way of some closing thoughts, again, there have been significant changes to the state report card in terms of scoring metrics, particularly with the shift from closing gaps to the metric around target group outcomes. So as a result of that, I would consider this a baseline year. I know, Dr. Beer, one of the questions that you had asked, I think, was, could you make any comparisons between prior-year report cards and current report card? Achievement is probably the only area that's close, because there haven't been a lot of changes in achievement. But again, it's been two years since there was a standardized assessment, and so even that has an impact, right, in that overall scoring. Growth changed significantly, and so did the other areas. And so again, it's not, there's not really even a basis for kind of a categorical comparison there. Additionally, you know, FPS maintained good results overall, right? We talked about, there was some regression, but not a lot. Also, participation rates were really high despite the pandemic. And so a lot of districts saw low test participation rates and high levels of opt-out. And while certainly, we had an elevated number in Franklin over the last year, it wasn't what was seen in other parts of the state. One area to continue to pay attention to, and I think it'll be pointed out later in some subsequent presentations tonight, is the math area, particularly around growth and kind of what's happening there from a programmatic standpoint. And the last thing I would say is, the target group, that bottom quartile, is the only group of students that are included in all four areas of the report card. They're in achievement, they're in growth, they have their own category, which is 25% of the report card, and they're also on-track to graduation. And so it's really important that we pay particular attention to how that group of students is performing and kind of make sure that we're following that group over time to see how they're doing in terms of scoring. So with that, I would love to open it up to any questions that you have.
Yes, I have a question about that new target group. So it's obviously more students? Is that, would that be a safe assumption?
Yes, it would be more than the prior closing gap. Yeah, it depends on the district, right? But in Franklin, yes, it would be higher, yeah.
Because it's not special ed necessarily.
Right. So under the closing gaps metric, each category was scored separately. So you had, for example, students with disabilities were included in the score, and then you had kind of a separate monitoring metric for low socioeconomic status students. Each non-white racial demographic group had their own scoring there. So there were a number of students that were in that group, but this group would still be higher in terms of bottom quartile than those groups were.
Because it could be students that were just, they weren't part of any of those subgroups, but are just.
And in fact, a lot of them are not. So whereas that prior score was just kind of non-traditional demographics or traditionally marginalized populations, this, many of these are not traditionally marginalized students that are in this group.
My other question is, what prompts these changes? Who approves these?
Yeah. So a lot of the changes are statutory, because the state report card is in statute. And so there's a lot there that dictates the structure and the frequency and kind of all of those pieces. And then outside of that, it's up to the Department of Public Instruction to interpret what the statute is saying, and then make adjustments to best meet whatever the statute is asking them to do. So the scoring change from closing gaps to target group outcomes was made by the Department of Public Instruction in an attempt to better meet what the statute was asking them to do around fair scoring across districts. And again, it had to relate to those particular districts that were seeing these like 15, 20-point swings in their overall report card score, because some populations were included and some were not in a given year.
You know, if, can we get a score without calculating, without taking account the HOC score? So what would you have a score if we hadn't included HOC?
Yeah. So the overall score would be 79-2 as a result. So we were at a 78-2 with the HOC in. If you excluded the HOC data from this last year, we'd move up one point to a 79-2. And then you can see the other two categories that would change as a result of the HOC data being removed.
So you say it's over, it's over three years that this data's taken. Is this one taken over four years, or is it?
This one's over four years, yeah. So they have to have three years of data. And because there was a year without data, they went back four academic years to include three years of data in the pool. And actually, some of the data sets, like attendance or like chronic absenteeism, are lagged. Graduation rate is lagged by a year, meaning it's a year behind. So some of those data sets came from the 16, 17 school year. So it went back even further than that.
I have a couple of questions about the target group.
Yeah.
Measurement. I'm just wondering, following up on Mrs. Wachowski's question, ballpark, what was, like, how much larger is that group in Franklin now than it was before? I know you, and I know it varied from year to year, but say, before, we measured 500 students, this year, we measured 1,200.
Yeah, I wouldn't have an exact number for you in terms of what that would look like, but I would say it probably tripled. It was a significant change.
And then, when you calculate that group across the whole district, is it a composite of the individual school scores, or is it sort of recalculated across the district as a whole?
That's a really good question. So the district score is simply the target group lists from each school that makes up the district. So the district scores are their own, and then, or I'm sorry, the school scores are their own, and then the district score is just that list.
Okay. And were there any unifying factors in the target group that you identified that can help guide your work to, or is that something best for the next presentation?
Yeah. So honestly, the, part of the challenge there is, DPI doesn't publish the list of students. So one of the things you have to do as a district is calculate that list of students on your own by school. And so, and it can be done, and you can do it. And I know Franklin has. But, so you have to first identify the group of students, right? From there, in terms of any, like, common factors, I think I would just point to, I think every district, their bottom quartile is their lowest performing, right? And so you're trying to reduce the amount of students that are below proficient, and how do you start to move some of those students up? One of the things that's interesting, right, is you might have a higher-performing elementary, for example, because there's only three grade levels tested, third, fourth, and fifth, where you have proficient students in that bottom quartile. Whereas you might have another school that all of their students are below basic. So there are a lot of differences from school to school, depending on the amount of grades, the students that are assessed. One of the things that was unique to this report card was the last target group that fed into these data at the elementary level was one grade level. Because fifth-grade students tested last year but didn't test in third grade, and third and fourth hadn't tested, because you need two years of growth data in order to be calculated in. So, so the data that fed this report card was representing one grade level at the elementary, whereas the next report card will be at least two.
Okay.
So there will be some more changes, right, down the road that'll affect the data.
And would you say that another place that that target group is captured is that growth, that very bottom growth lateral bar that you showed us, the not proficient last year category? I mean, that's got to be some.
Yeah, they're definitely, many of them are captured in here, right? Like, again, some of the target group students might be proficient, but the vast majority are captured in this not proficient last year.
Just to understand, clarify, so the school is its own data point, and then it gets added together? It's not, you don't mix them all together? School is its own entity, and that gets melded together?
Yeah, so the school report card reflects the students that attended that school, and then the district report card takes into account all of the district data. So it's not necessarily an average, but it's taking the students from all of those schools that factored into the building-based scoring, and then factors it into the district scoring. So, so everyone at the, in other words, everyone at the school level that's feeding the school level score is included in the district level score.
Would you get rid of the school tag and just, I guess I'm?
Right, they're all students of the district. So they're all, it's, think of it as one big school, if that's the way to think about it, right? That everybody factors into that piece.
Now, you might have one school that's low performing, it might factor into how ultimately the district does.
And it depends on the, like, the size of that school, right, and how low-performing they were, and all of those kinds of things.
Okay.
Well, thank you. You explained it very clearly, so I appreciate it.
You bet. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Just one follow-up. So this is out on, I mean, parents have seen this, it's out on our?
Yeah. So there's an internal release that happens late October, early November, to give districts a chance to fix some data sets. And then, from there, DPI does the public release, which just occurred, yeah. And so now it's out there, it's on, we have to, in fact, we're required by statute to publish it on the district website. And then, from there, it's also available on the DPI site.
Thank you, Dr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Annual assessment report, Dr. Mo, please.
Thank you. And I gave you a new copy, that's the same, what you have in paper copy is the same, that's posted in Board Reports, just so you know. So if you don't want to toggle back and forth, they're not different. First, I wanted to let you know, you see, there's extra people here, obviously. So because the bulk of this work happens with principals and buildings and school improvement planning, they are all present tonight. In lieu of doing separate school presentations, there will be a chance that you can ask questions about school improvement plans. But please keep in mind, with our new structure, some of the more specific questions could come through those board liaison meetings and get reported back. So absolutely, they're here to support and answer questions, but keep in mind, too, the next time you follow up in building visits, those questions could happen then. And we also have our director team to answer questions. So I'll kind of pause through each section. It is a ton of data. I'm just going to try to highlight it, so we're not here till the wee hours of the night. So the same.
I love it.
The same, I do, I love. I was very happy to print color copies and see them come out, because they look nicer in color copies. But that said, any one of us would be available for follow-ups. So even if you go home and think about it tonight and have more questions, sometimes it's hard when there's so much presented to think through it. So this is just a reminder, all of this comes under our coherence plan. So every time I look at data for district work, I have to think about, what is it that we're setting out to do? What are our core values? What's driving this work? What lens do I have to look at all this data with? And that's how that report is kind of set up. These are all the data points that were included in that report. So we already talked about the Wisconsin State Report Card, but the first section was that state report card. There's an appendix at the beginning, or kind of a table of contents that gives you a little bit more detail about each one of these assessments, because even that alone can be overwhelming, all the different ways we measure kids. can be overwhelming, all the different ways we measure kids. Overall, Wisconsin State Report Card, we did well. I think everybody was worried about the new form of the report card coming out. To be honest, nobody knew what to expect and Franklin did quite well. Dr. Beer, I know you had a question. I mentioned in the report that we were working through aligning our work with that target group concept. And Dr. Cohen explained it a little bit. This idea, we used to have all these platforms to track each demographic group separately and we still do have that. But we've now built a lower quartile kind of dashboard so that in each school, we can start to track students, monitor students like that, and that was a change. If you're out in buildings, you'll notice that some buildings even chose to approach their school improvement planning through this lens of target groups. How are we looking at the target groups? What are those kids experiencing in school? How are they engaging and thinking about that in a slightly different way? So you might hear that term. Something that really kind of made me feel good is a lot of us didn't like that term bottom quartile. So our principals have come up with all sorts of better names like GG, Growth Group or Focus Group. So that bottom quartile is kind of deficit thinking, so I'm always pleased when I go into buildings that you'll see that that's carried through. We know these are the students that we're tracking, but is there a way we can change the language? Also, we'll continue to work. I know in our meeting last week, we discussed this, the follow-up on that legislative bill. It's much less of an effect for HOC, but a point is still a point. So that's another carryover of that data. But overall, we were pleased with state report cards and how they came out. Kind of the second section in there is the National Clearinghouse data. There were some questions around that. That's kind of an apples-to-apples platform, will you, of, of where districts choose to enter data around post-secondary. So we have a lot of data internally about how kids are doing here, but less data systems once they leave us. So overall, we continue to score well on post-secondary. You'll notice that that very first graph has a downward trend, which when you look at it, looks like bad news. That's on page eight. And we had some discussion around that and, and really what that's saying, and in fact, I talked to Dr. Miller about it before the meeting. We are doing a very good job at directing kids towards post-secondary options that might not be a four-year college. So that is measuring students that are going to enter someplace that gives them a degree. So some sort of four-year institution, two-year institution. It would not measure an apprenticeship or a student who is working. It also wouldn't measure students who are doing both. So enter in a four-year college, right? These are real rigid national data. So you might have a kid who takes a job with Epic Medical Systems in Middleton and they pay to send that person, child, adult at that time, to school as a part of their work on the job. These metrics are not nuanced enough to capture things like that. So yes, that looks like a downward trend, but I think the bigger picture is maybe people are starting to steer a little bit into a pathway that might not be the traditional four-year. And we are following the national trends, just like we're following the national trends. There's a gap between males and females that we see throughout that post-secondary data, which I found interesting. I guess before I really looked into it, I wasn't aware of that gap, nor would I have guessed it, but Franklin aligns with the national trends. So that follows through too, to our AP data, for instance. So what are the things I think that is a next step for us to explore that? You hear a lot about female students not accessing STEM, for instance, but I have to say admittedly for myself, I have done less digging into why do males access AP less or what is going on there? So that's a definite next step and that you see that carry through to the National Clearinghouse data as well.
Do you set any goals around that National Clearinghouse data? Because I had that same question. Is the fact that we're having a downward trend in rigidly defined post-secondary enrollment necessarily a bad thing? If people are entering things that are more targeted to their specific desires?
I would say it's not a bad thing.
And so you don't necessarily set goals around that?
I would say, and, and by the way, feel free to jump in. It's hard for me to say.
You do not set any goals at high school level.
Okay.
And actually, for planning as it relates to the college and career readiness, like readiness, kids making better choices, more informed choices that aren't necessarily four-year, I think that's a ongoing thing to let them know the plethora of different pathways that are out there that may not be that.
I wonder if there's a way to capture that because this sort of makes it look like we're leaving people behind, but I, that's not what I hear you saying is going on. So that would be an interesting thing to try and capture in, in some way if we could.
Well, it's also.
Bring a little more meaning to this data.
It's also possible that looking at page nine and, and seeing that, seeing that more, the up, there's an upward trend in, in, in students who are, who are graduating. I, I find that.
More significant. I do too.
I, I think that evens out that downward trend quite a bit, actually.
I'm just trying to pause any other.
I'm sorry.
No, I don't want to move too fast if people have other questions.
It still would be interesting though, because that's 60% of kids, right? Like what are those other 40% doing? If we could capture it in any way, I'd be curious. But it's hard once they leave. I get it.
No, I would argue something like the military isn't reflected on that, right? So how do you, I think it's been a struggle. I've heard other districts speak about that, like you want to know. I mean, isn't that why everyone goes into teaching? You want to run into that kid in the grocery store 10 years later and know that you planted that seed in that kid and we don't have a good way of capturing that? So just big picture, it would be, I wish we did figure out a way, yeah.
Well, is this just collected from colleges, right? So that's why it's only captured?
Both, there's some data that the school district contributes to, but yeah, it's following them through college and there's no real rule that people have to report or not report. So it's not the best data point, but it had been, in, in fact, I almost thought about taking it out, to be perfectly honest with you, because it seemed less relevant to our work. But I know that it's a different way of looking at the data. It's something you were used to seeing. It's a different way to think about it that we don't have a, quite frankly, any other metric for that works well at this time.
But there are entities that do collect where kids are at five years from now regardless. Isn't there? I mean, I recall at, at conferences, there are some entities out there that, I don't know if they do a survey, but they reach out to find out where they're at, whether they're at a job in the military. I think they're out there. That would be more valuable than just.
You mean something that we would do from the district? We certainly could look at that.
All right, thank you.
I think the next section, college and career readiness, to me, gives a better picture of kind of this collective work that we see. Those metrics, I think, are more representative. So both college readiness and career readiness and readiness in both went up from last year as a general. And if you're looking at the, kind of the chart, all of those metrics, kind of the big metrics are captured on the top. That's page 12. That's where I'm getting that data across the very top in the black bar. And then you can see it's broken down with all the areas that we track for college and career readiness. Something that I'm really excited about is Mr. Borzak. There is a college and career readiness dashboard built in Eddis and something that he did is went through to all the high school teachers and showed them how they can look at those indicators for their class. So if I'm teaching a foods class, I can look at those college and career readiness indicators that you see listed underneath that black bar and see for my particular class, what's happening. There was some work at the high school for advisors to know that, to, to speak about that with kids. So even that language of like, oh, next year you should be taking Algebra II. That's a readiness indicator. Oh, are you going to do that, like trying to make that more universal? So I think that's really good work. I also know that the high school is working on focusing, that we do see some gaps in college and career readiness for students with IEPs. So how can we think about that differently? What are we going to put in place so that those students reach their goals? And then we talked about, is that two meetings ago or one meeting ago? Our new Ed for Employment Plan and spreading some of those supports that were happening for the isolated group more universal. So that data, to me, I was really pleased with across the board. I'm just going to try to pause after each section. There's no questions, I'll keep moving. Next section is ACT. When we look at ACT data, there's a couple of things I wanted to point out. So we think about it in terms of composite score, right? That's the line graph that you see. That score did go up for us. So what's the average score that students are scoring on the ACT? The other way we look at the data is benchmarks. And I don't know why, it would seem to me, if I was ACT, I would make all the benchmarks the same for the different subject areas. That would make, that would help me in my linear mind, but they're not. So each subject area has a different benchmark score. So the other way we look at data, you'll see in there is the percent of students meeting all of those benchmarks. So those are two different composite score and then these benchmark scores. The composite score is an average, so to speak, of all the composite, or excuse me, of all the benchmark scores that go in. But when you look out there in media, quite often you see that composite score. That's kind of the go-to metric that people look at. One thing that we're working through is, I know that Dr. Cohen mentioned this too. I, I don't know how much people tuned in, but it's, we are right now shifting tests for ninth and 10th graders. So this will be our last year with ACT Aspire. That wasn't because DPI, for once, right, did that, ACT discontinued the test. So it no longer existed, so states were forced to adopt that. All signals point to it being the pre-ACT. So we did opt to give the pre-ACT at the high school this year, thinking that that's going to become our new state test, but that hasn't been announced. So students will continue to take Aspire. Just so you know, it's like all these floating data points, we are again going to have a change there. So we're trying to determine, we had a pretty good idea of how predictive Aspire data was for ACT. When we switch now to a different assessment, we don't know yet. Of course, ACT says that pre-ACT should predict ACT, but we haven't had enough years to know that. So that will be new learning. The other thing I know, we had public comment a couple of meetings maybe ago about different summer school options and different support so that there is an ACT test prep support that's offered. I know that's something that's been kind of talked about in different circles. So hoping that students take advantage of that. We do have a way to scholarship, so to speak, students who can't afford to pay. It is a paid service, so hoping that anyone who wants access to that support could get access.
That's during the summer, you said?
No, this one is during the school year, but I remember we had a parent in one of the early meetings talking about wanting different summer school offerings. So I did have a conversation with Ms. Sunshimmer about trying to add a summer. We count on an outside group to provide that, but could that happen in the summer as well? Right now, it's during the school year.
So Dr. Moe, one of the things, I think nationally and even district-wise, in ACT, if you always look, English and reading are always somehow students lack behind as compared to math, you know? Students are always doing good at math and English and reading, which is, you know, supposed to be somehow because they are the important component of the ACT. Do we have any plan, how, how we can enhance that aspect because it's not a district problem, it's a national problem where English and reading, for some reason, students are unable to score. For example, I know that some students, if, if they can score 35, 36 on the ACT in English, English and reading, automatically the composite score is 33, 34, you know? So, but most of the students are doing good math in, good in math, but not in English and reading. So how can we balance that? Because at the end of the road, the composite score is component of English, reading, math, and science, the STEM, you know?
I guess I have a technical and an adaptive answer for that. On one side, I don't know if you know the concept of ACT super score? So students who take the ACT many times, you have to pay for it. It costs money, but some colleges, university will allow you to take the highest score on each sub-test and, and count it into what they call literally a super score. So if my parents, my family has means, I could take the ACT five times and pluck out the highest subset score to make my highest composite. There's other universities on a technical side that will not accept that. They will not accept a super score. So that's one technical thing. On the adaptive side, we are in the process, both with K8 and 912 of English Curriculum Review. And one of the things that we noticed with our data at the high school is the more access that students have to what we would think of as honors-level rigor, the better they do on the ACT, right? That shouldn't surprise us and it seems so simple, but it's a little bit complicated with how we have previously structured classes. So how do all students have access to that same level of what we've thought of as honors? Rigor should improve ACT outcomes for Franklin. I'm not sure if I can tackle the national issues. I can try to tackle the Franklin issues. The other thing that we're looking at, and this will come up later, is you'll notice we did see a drop in ELA scores on the forward exam, which is kind of our K8 measure, whereas ACT is kind of our high school measure that we go to. There is some new data coming out on, on the experts that weighing in about the resource that we use at ELA, maybe not being as effective as we thought, and asking Teachers College, who is the publisher, to add some new things. So for instance, a couple of years ago, they added a phonics piece, right? Responding to the needs as this rolls out. So that's something else we're watching. That curriculum review process, as you know, got kind of integrated into PD days, so more voices can be involved. It can happen more regularly. It's not just a select group of people that volunteered to do this work, that everybody's doing this work. So adaptive-wise, I'm hoping that helps. But we've seen the same thing. ACT scores have improved for some groups, but not for others. And why is that leveling out, especially in ELA?
And also to add to that question, you know, because if we are thinking of preparing our students, you know, from that perspective as such, so basically the students have two and a half years, ninth, 10th, and the first semester of the 11th grade, because most of them take the ACT in the spring of, you know, 11th grade and, you know, they move on to start applying for the colleges because they start applying in colleges. So are we taking into consideration of planning ahead so that the ninth, 10th, and half of the 11th year, 11th grade is structured in such a way where they, we can actually focus on somehow, you know, giving that rigor and extra work and somehow improving their scores?
That would be the leveling up in English. The other thing is, we hope, if pre-ACT becomes the standardized test, that you can opt to give the pre-ACT as a formative measure, meaning this year we're choosing to give it in fall and in spring. So we, high schoolers, like, we use that MAPS testing K8. That pre-ACT could be used in a similar fashion as MAP to be a formative. And then also, when it happens in the spring, count for the state assessment, kind of double as both.
Thank you.
Just a question. Page, is page 19 where we have the breakouts of the areas?
Correct.
And it looks like ELA is really the, the best area that we're performing in?
It is.
So I don't know if you mentioned reading was the problem? I don't really see it based on.
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be reflected in the data.
Here. And it's, you know, English Language Arts, there's a writing component also in this test, is there not?
So the state has different benchmarks for the ACT than national ACT. Another question that I can't answer, but, but it's different. So we do see, I, I think what we see, I mean, I guess first of all, I would argue that I would like more than 68% of kids, right, to be proficient, which I know you're not saying. The other thing is when we dig down into that data, these are all the kids who are doing well that are accessing that rigor, meeting that benchmark. ELA is the lowest benchmark, that, lower than, again. Why, if you made up the test, you wouldn't just make all the benchmarks? I have a hard time with that. Why wouldn't you just make them all the same, but they're not?
In the past, everybody had to take the, everybody had to take the ACT test. Did everybody take the ACT test last year? And what about other tests? I know there was some testing that didn't get done or wasn't going to be done or maybe as you're going through these, you could point out some of that too. I don't, I mean, I don't know what the numbers say about that.
So ACT did happen. What we really missed out on in this, I have to close my eyes, picture the years. In 1920, we missed forward. We miss a spring dose of MAPS. So you'll see on some of the graphs, there's a blank where there's no bar. So many of the state tests were not given.
And Dr. Moe, because I think it's going to be till 2023, where some of the colleges, specifically in Wisconsin, are not counting the ACT, you know? So they're mostly relying on the GPA, you know? With the average GPA of 2.8, you know, for kind of, you know, how well are we kind of preparing the students? Because if they don't have ACT, the only they have GPA to support their application, you know? And especially competitive schools like UW-Madison and all that stuff, they are, you know, they look at this stuff. So how are we doing? I know it's kind of, you know, we have to prepare for this, we have to prepare for this, and it's all in combined, but you know, I don't know. There's an easy answer to make sure that they succeed in everything.
I know a lot of people have expressed that they didn't think that the ACT should have been counted so much in the first place. I mean, there's a group of people in the state and when the pandemic came, that's not being counted. I guess I can't answer that because each college or university does it semi-differently. I, I don't, and I don't know, high school people, if your counselors have had inquiries or if there's talks about that, you could answer better than myself.
Okay. Can I jump from here?
Yeah, please.
So when, when schools do a test optional, typically that means they'll still consider if you have it. And if you don't have it, then everything else has to be better, right? So your involvement outside of school, your grades, the courses, the rigor that you took, like your personal essays, all those things just have to be raised when it's not there to be considered. So in my experience, even schools that have been test optional for a decently long time, like I think Lawrence might be in the box at Valley area, for example, when they get, when they made it test optional, they said, we'll still take it and consider it if you have it, right? And then we have that plus everything else. If you don't have it, we just don't have that. So when you talk about competitive things like scholarships or admissions, it's, sometimes it's easy to just focus on the, they're not taking, they don't require it anymore. Well, if they don't require it, doesn't mean that they won't look at it if you have it. And because the state's still going to have our students taking it, I would contend that most of our students who are really considering the more rigorous, you know, collegiate applications universities that are going to continue to take the ACT and take it seriously and really invest in it. But in terms of the grades and everything else, like the college admissions are really, it really is different than sometimes you would think. Like honors points, weighted grades, those things, they don't look at. Most often, they don't look at pluses and minuses in most cases. They don't even consider all subject areas sometimes when they calculate GPA. So it really is a whole, like, alchemy that they do with college level that I think is sometimes like hard for us to truly, truly get because it's different for each school. But I think that our kids will still value ACT even when there's more test optional stuff out there. There's still, it says you're ready for college. I mean, that's what those, if I'm not ready, this indicator is me. So then ready means to get a passing course in a freshman level class. So, I mean, that's still a good reason to take it seriously.
Thank you. We have these ACT composite scores and ACT benchmarks. Do we have a comparison of how we've done versus national averages?
I don't have that in the report, but I could get it. We've always been above the national average, but we have districts around us that outperform us as a general rule on that composite score. But I can get you both of those. I don't have that in the report.
Okay.
And Dr. Moore, just to, if you cannot, you know, what is the national, what is the state, you know? And I know that we have some pretty good districts surrounding us, you know? Are they doing anything different than us? And if their ACT scores and all this stuff is better, are they doing anything different in which we can also offer to our students?
In terms of ACT prep or just in terms of curriculum? Or in terms of everything?
Mostly, let's talk about ACT itself. If kind of, if it just kind of, you know, are they doing something special for the students in which their average ACT scores are higher? And I know that looking at the score of twenty-two, it seems to be kind of, you know, especially when it's thirty-six, you know? Twenty-two seems to be pretty low, you know? When you're comparing at, you know, at this state level, especially good colleges and all this, with scholarships, academic scholarships and all that stuff. So I don't know if you have any information of what other surrounding districts are doing and if they're doing anything different, which we can kind of, you know, copy and to also give that same training and rigor to our students.
Anecdotally, I do. Big picture chart-wise, I don't, right? Anecdotally, there's some districts that believe in really teaching ACT-type questions very tightly, right? Our district chooses to infiltrate that as a part of the curriculum and revisit it over and over every day. There are some parents who have their, pay for their students to be in ACT test prep for years, I mean, literal years to get ready. And there's other districts where parents either don't choose to or don't have the means to do that. So it's that balance of what is the school doing versus what are the parents choosing to do in terms of outside support? I pointed to the example of taking the ACT four, five, six times, you know, and working through, and is that different than a student that just shows up as an eleventh grader and takes it one time? I can follow up with you. I mean, I have anecdotal stories, but I don't have anything. And I don't know if our high school people do. You hear all sorts of different things. I think the hard part is to try to kind of figure out what is directly impacting that ACT increase in score and what isn't with all the things that go into that recipe for building a kid, which is, which is the thing that's really impacting. Makes me interested and curious that you brought that up. I'd check into it.
It's only one test, though. You know, from my perspective, it's one test. And whatever score you get, the scores tell us that only thirty-four-point-eight percent are meeting all the benchmarks. So, and only sixty percent graduate. So.
What, only sixty percent graduate? What is it?
Have a, have a forty.
Oh, forty degree.
Have a degree after. So it's one data point. Maybe there's other things you can, you know, broader picture. I like a broader picture than just this ACT test. We can go overboard on that.
So the next kind of section is AP or Advanced Placement. That first part just tracks the numbers, the trend data, just in terms of the students that are accessing that. Something that I wanted to point out in a different way than you've seen the graphs then before. Just let me get you the right page number. So when you look on page twenty-two, you can see that a lot of the metrics you used to see were showing gaps and data around just the group of students who are accessing AP, right? So you take out the students who are in an AP class and you disaggregate and look at data. The way that I have it reported in this report is the percentage of students in the overall population for those gaps that are accessing AP. So for instance, on page twenty-two, you'll see the first graph is the percent of students in all of FHS, right, accessing an AP course. And then you'll see that broken out by gender. So that gender breakout is not of only the students who are taking AP. It's if you ran those percentages across the whole population, which kind of takes that and instead of looking just at that small group of AP, thinks about it a little bit bigger on who are students accessing? Who is getting that rigor? Who is choosing to go that path? So I just wanted to, that those percentages likely look different than how you've looked at them in the past. It widens that net in terms of what are we thinking about? So if we looked at that graph, forty-six percent of females in Franklin, Franklin High School, and thirty-three percent of males, that's not of those taking AP, that's out of the overall population. Does that distinction make sense? It's a different way to think about it. If we're thinking about AP as a good thing in terms of access that we want to allow more students to have.
So it is the percent of that population?
Correct.
Okay.
Not the percent of students taking AP.
Got it.
Which makes the numbers look different, especially if looking at those gap graphs. For instance, it changes what you're looking at pretty significantly.
Just one course, at least one course.
Correct.
Because we have a lot of kids.
Correct. Thank you, yes. So you can see there's some gaps there. It gets back to this concept of leveling up, who is accessing those courses. Not that AP courses are the only way and for everybody, but kind of as a general rule, when you're looking at proportionate representation, as you see on like the graphs at the end of the report, you would hope that if we have equal amounts of boys and girls in Franklin High School, that we would see equal amount of boys and girls accessing AP classes, and we don't. So that's when you start to look at, why is that? What's happening? What is the reason? That's not unique to Franklin, but it doesn't mean we can turn the other way either. Even if that is a national trend, that's our job to kind of poke around in that a little bit and figure it out. So we do have some data in here about ACT Aspire. Remember, that's the test that's going away. This will be the last year, the last school year that we take that test. And again, Mr. Sprague, to your question earlier, this is a graph where you see it's blank for 2020, right? There was no data. When you look on page twenty-five in that report, there was no bar there. So that test was not given. We did see a drop in this particular measure from 2019, which is the last time we gave it, and then in 2021. So in that, in that gap, you're in the middle. We had some time in there where there was the Aspire interim test. You'll hear this, Aspire, ACT Aspire, Aspire interim. This is a place where there's been lots of changes. It doesn't excuse a drop in data, but it does make it confusing when you're looking at different data sources of different tests, all different grades. There's been a lot of changes, and there will be another one. But this is an area we did see as a drop with giving the pre-ACT. Remember, we opted to do that this year. High school students took that the end of September, beginning of October, hoping that that's formative data to plan for spring and that we can at least use that for kind of that fall to spring planning work.
I also think that for the ACT Aspire, I mean, I guess all the ACT stuff, it's completely different students. So fall isn't necessarily a, isn't necessarily something that we did. It's something, it's a difference between two sets of different people.
But isn't it every year?
No.
Yes, but once you take it in ninth grade, you don't, you didn't take it in eleventh grade because you, so the numbers are from, in 2019, none of those kids that took it in 2019 took it again in 2021.
Yep.
Yeah, you would have seen groups, if they took it as a freshman in 2018, they would have taken it as a sophomore in 2019. But then with that gap year, the data gets messy again. You're right. So that's kind of the high school. We're going to shift gears a little bit and move looking at forward exam, which again is our younger students. We are looking at that drop in score. So that is another group of graphs where you will see there's a missed year, right? Twenty-twenty has no column. So we're looking at some drops in scores from 2019, the last time the test was given, to 2021. And we all know what happened in between those points in time. If our data internally in the district holds true, Franklin held relatively steady compared to some of the drops they saw across the state. That's not an excuse-making, but we're all trying to figure out what it's going to look like on the other side as we emerge out of, or kind of try to emerge out of the disruption that we had. We are analyzing that. One thing we're looking in particular is we had an eighth-grade group who are now being ninth graders that had a particularly large drop in forward exam scores. You'll see that in that cohort graph. So that eighth grade, lower bar, those students now became ninth graders. So it's very hard to sort out, was that pandemic? Was it not? Was it disrupted? Is that a group of kids that needs more intervention? But that is very strongly on our radar, that that group, and I'm not trying to be deficit like that, group of kids. But for whatever reason, that's a spot where we see the effects of a lot of disruption that we have to figure out. I'm not sure exactly, but that is well on our radar. I think it calls for some, if we look at that combined with some of the gaps that we see in this data, really intentional combined work between teaching and learning and student services, thinking about our universal instruction, thinking about how we're going to support kids, right? It calls for kind of a bigger systems-level look at things. Is this eighth-grade group that was, or now ninth-grade group that was so disruptive, what were the systems that we didn't support them well enough with? What happened in addition to the pandemic? The other thing that I just wanted to say on a technical side is the extended response. So we didn't take the test. Then we had the test, but there was no, what we would call extended writing. So it's called TDA. That didn't happen for forward exam. That is coming back this year. So again, when you're looking at data, not that writing scores would have made or break everything, but you're not looking at apples to apples again. So we missed a year of testing. They brought it back in 2021 for forward, but there was no extended writing, written test. That will be coming back when we take it this spring. So just on a technical side. So I'll pause there. I know that some people had questions about forward. Dr. Beer, you did.
I mean, it was just basically, whoa, what's going on with our grade graders?
I think our reaction was similar. We need to look at this, yeah.
And I think you already sort of addressed my other concern about, yeah, curricular evaluation, especially around English Language Arts, so.
And then, so we talked about how we're using AC, excuse me, pre-ACT at the high school as kind of this formative growth measure. What we have K eight is the MAP assessment, which you're familiar with. To me, this was probably some of the best news that we've seen is that when we look at fall-to-fall growth scores, that's the bars that you'll see on page thirty-three. So you'll see those bars. And you'll see that's fall-to-fall. So that is the percent of students that had a growth number above the fifty-first percentile if you're looking at the amount of growth they made fall-to-fall. So that's meaning last fall to this fall, and we all know what's going on. So the fact that in both cases, reading held firm and math actually made really good growth seems promising that if there was disruption and there was gaps, we're making up some ground, right? That's a growth measure, which is much different than forward, which is a point-in-time, more summative measure. I think that's promising. So we can talk about MAP in terms of achievement percentile. If you take all the kids in all the world and line them up on a big list, where do our kids fall? When we're talking about this, we're talking about it as growth. So any student that makes more than fifty percent growth, in theory, would be making more than the expected growth, and a gap somewhere would be closing. So the more kids we can get to do that on all levels, the better, if that makes sense.
So do we have a, I mean, this seems to be getting at a key thing, going back to the state report card, right? That twenty-five percent of the state report card that Dr. Cohen talked about, that's about growth in your target group. Do we have a similar growth measure for middle school and high school students?
We have MAPS growth. Are you asking about that state report card metric as looking just at?
Sort of like a measure that captures growth, especially at the high school level, or?
Middle school, we have it, so MAP measures growth, so we get two.
Okay, I forgot that that was middle school, too.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So then I guess it's just high school? We don't.
Well, Aspire does. Aspire, like, the benchmarks change over time. So it's not quite the same as the way that MAP would speak to growth, but yes. But I guess the thing is, the growth isn't, like, the growth expected on AP is terribly large. So, like, it's not as, not as profound as what one would hope to actually make up as soon as it's not ready.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks.
The other thing that I wanted to point out in working with all the buildings, MAP data breaks down a lot of things by skills, skill gaps, skill accelerations, actual certain skills. So buildings have spent time doing work on, okay, if we look at pre-pandemic, I guess we're not calling it post-pandemic now, pre-pandemic and now, right? What are the themes of skills? Or what are the areas this kind of bottom quartile of kids are needing? And what is kind of a systematic way? We can make that up. How can we put some actual checkmarks to that? And it's just sort of saying, we know this disrupted kids? Well, in what? With what? What are the MAP skills we need to backfill, add on to? Now we're going to switch gears, right? The pretty blue graphs, blue and green, switches to Student Engagement Survey, which is an internal measure, meaning that's something we do in Franklin through Qualtrics. You can see the questions listed there, and those questions are organized kind of into groupings or types of questions around relationships, learning, and environment. So the little kids have smiley face answers. Bigger kids, of course, have rating answers, agree, strongly disagree, but it's age-appropriate. Traditionally, we've done very well, high level of engagement based on this measure. So a next step that we're taking now is looking at what we would call disaggregated data. So because students take this with their ID number, there is a way to say, of students who are English language learners, do we see them as more disengaged on certain questions than others? Of students who are gifted, do we see? So are there trends in our demographic groups for how they answer these questions? And do we have to respond to that? So that's something that will look new. We give the full survey, or we will give the full survey once a year. That means all questions. And then buildings work to do what we call a pulse survey or shorter sample of questions that are given based on their improvement planning in their building. So I know a lot of buildings had teachers look at, for instance, in fifth grade, what were the questions that were the lowest score? So they would want to include those on a survey so that they could track their work trying to improve just those specific questions. And then, this is my thank you to Mrs. Witkowski for catching. The final chunk of graphs is our additional equity data. And on your first version of this, the red, excuse me, the red, the gold and the black bars were reversed on the legend. So I just want to make sure on the new copy, you can see that. Back to the general rule, when we look at things like identifying students as gifted, suspensions, we would hope that the percentage they make up in the overall population would be the percentage that they make up in those measures. So for instance, if sixteen-point-five percent of students in the district come from a home experiencing poverty or are low income, we would expect that of all gifted students, sixteen-point-five percent is made up by students who are low income. we would expect that of all gifted students, 16.5% is made up by students who are low income. So any place where you see the bars are different heights, that means there's a disproportionality, either an over or under representation. That's not uncommon. Some of us nod like, yes, we expect to see that, right? Again, I would argue that there's very few districts who don't see disproportionality in some of those areas, but it doesn't mean it's still not our work and very much our work. And why is that happening? And what are the things we have control over and can change? And what are the things that we don't? So you have myself, you have our director's team, you have our wonderful supporting cast of building leaders. If there's burning questions that you would want to ask in this forum, go for it. And if not, I encourage you, you can follow up with your building visits as well.
I think there may be some more as a, as a, relate to the coherence plan update as well.
Are we okay if we move on to coherence plan? Okay.
You can take a second and have some water, though. I don't want another one popping.
You guys fell for that, right? My first time, you just lower the bar of expectations. For people in the audience, when I presented the coherence plan, I had a horrible coughing fit, like Jim had to give me a mint. I couldn't stop. They said, do you want to stop for water? So that's what they're referring to. That was my big debut.
And yet, we asked you back, right?
Right? So coherence plan. You guys have seen this before. We are still, even though we've refreshed this, looking at better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community. We still have our strategic priorities. And you'll see that there's five of them. And just to make the connection, those correspond to the five sections of the coherence plan update. So each one of these strategic priorities has a list of metrics that we're looking at, and that's what I'm updating you on today. There'll be another similar update in March. So this is kind of our first update since we've had the refresh or the new coherence plan. If you remember, our strategic priorities are student achievement and growth. In your report, that's the first kind of red, yellow, green chart that you'll see. Closing gaps, employee engagement, family and community engagement, and fiscal stewardship. So you'll see that broken down in the report. And as a part of that, this year, we're looking at core strategy areas. So when I go through the slides that you'll see, I'll highlight, I could do a very long list, but I tried to highlight those district actions thus far that have been specific to these core strategy areas. So strategic priority metrics. Each one of those sections has a metric. So when we look at student achievement and growth, the darker or brighter colored cells, and you can look closer in the report, part of doing what we call a heat map like this is to also look at it from far away, right? So when I look at this from far away, I would say we have still lots of work to do between now and the end of the three years around the metrics that we chose to use to monitor student achievement and growth. You know, yes, the state report card looks really good, and we're happy about that. And that was a celebration in all areas. But internally, we still have some areas that we want to work on. So some district actions that we're taking around student achievement and growth. Myself, I have regular meetings with myself and the building principal. I attend sit team meetings. I try to get into classrooms, right? We're trying to make sure that the district worked as aligned all the way through down school improvement plans, down to classrooms. I know teaching and learning and student services are working to align what we call our coaches or our system specialists around having a unified message. So when I say across disciplines, we have math coaches, literacy coaches, and cross categorical or student services coaches, making sure that they're all giving a common message and they all have the skills to support in all three of those areas, knowing that they're still experts in those areas, but that work is aligned. Principals have done a great job in supporting teachers in aligning their PPGs, which would be their personal teacher growth goals, professional practice goal. That's what a teacher says they're going to work on each year with the school improvement plans, which align with the coherence plan. And actually, that was an area where staff rated us higher on employee engagement between June and now, seeing how their work of their own PPG aligns to the district work. The other thing that I highlighted earlier was that curriculum review process has kind of been broadened and integrated in a different way. So making sure, and a lot of that is, what are we teaching? How are we teaching it? What's working and what's not to do that? So that conversation is happening across disciplines more frequently during our PD days. I'm going to keep going if nobody, I'm just trying not to, okay. Kind of the next section, right? So remember, closing gaps is strategic priority two. This is the chunk of metrics that talk about closing gaps. And when we talk about closing gaps, we're talking about reducing the points or the percentages that you would see a lot on a lot of these graphs in the student assessment report where there's two bars. Something that I want to caution you on is for some of these metrics that are in the green, it doesn't quite seem to jive with the graphs that you looked at that still show a gap between the lines. And something that we saw happening in some cases is that the gap closed because the top line came down. You want to close a gap from the bottom, not close a gap from the top. That didn't happen as all cases, but a general rule, I just want to caution you, we should say, yes, everything's green, it's good. But in some cases, the gap closed the wrong way. And I guess on a positive note, we could say that some of our student demographic groups dropped less than our overall students, which is good, but not good in a good enough way for us, right? So I just want to caution, we're following the metric as written. But principals are working really hard on this. That's why it doesn't quite jive with all those graphs that you saw in the assessment report. In that line where you see both a red and a green, that's because that was written to have reading and math together. So the red is our current ELA gap, and the green is our current math gap. So that's why there's two cells highlighted on that line. When we talk about closing gaps, we just finished up some root cause analysis work with our leadership team around students being identified for special ed based on race. So we have some racial gaps in the students who are being identified for special ed. Our next step will be to look at some of that, some of that data around students with IEPs in general. So what is it that we can do better to support those learners and make sure that they're getting the most out of tier one instruction or universal instruction that they can? We talked about what we call custom-built dashboards. That's Mr. Borzak and building things so we can monitor these groups. I know I already alluded to that lower quartile or the growth group, as people with more positive language than me call it. The other thing is, we have our equity data, but a lot of the metrics were used. So for instance, the student engagement data, we need to disaggregate that. So if overall, 79% of students are positively engaged, why do we see all these other outcome gaps? Maybe if you look deeper at that data, there are some groups of students who are, at least on the survey, saying they're more engaged than other groups.
Where would you say our growth group is most represented in the KPIs that we're going to be seeing? So you mentioned that Mr. Borzak is developing a dashboard for you all to monitor. I'm just wondering, where should we, as a board, be keeping track of them in these KPIs? Do you know what I mean?
No.
That, but the growth group, the bottom quartile, which of these indicators is best reflecting their, yeah, where they're at?
It would be the closing gaps section. I would say if I had to pick one group that's most often in everybody's growth group, it's students with IEPs. So I know Mr. Cohen told you, like, school to school, it's different groups of kids. But the group that comes up on everybody's list most frequently would be students with IEPs. Not that that's the only group, but I know you asked, Dr. Beer, you know, who are the kids that are in there? Saying it really, obviously, it's the kids that we see those big gap in lines for that are most often in that growth group. So students of color, students learning English, students with IEPs. Not all the time, not exclusively, but they would be overrepresented in that target group, yes. So this right here would be the best place to look.
Okay, thank you.
Employee engagement. So we give an employee engagement survey in a similar fashion, or we will, to that student engagement. So the full survey goes out in spring. And then building leaders have some input on what questions they want to ask in a smaller section to measure their work in the building. So we just missed, we were above that 80%. Then in 2020, it was not given. Then we're just one point below. So again, overall, employee engagement based on that survey is quite good on the questions that we use to measure. Some district actions that we're doing around employee engagement. I know teaching and learning and student services worked hard to align our district professional development plan to the work that we did around talent development themes, which would be things that principals saw and things that teachers indicated were areas they wanted to grow in. What do I need more professional development is? What are the pieces aligned to my work that I want some support? Not even support, but some time to professionally develop around. This idea of high-performing teams is one of our goals. We'll be doing that with our leadership team next week. And many building principals in different ways have brought that work in to their school improvement teams and their PLCs, which would be, PLCs are the teacher teams. That school improvement team is a mixed team of different teachers and the administrator. We did, I mentioned for the pulse survey, we had some common district questions that we wanted to measure, and then buildings and departments. So that includes, you know, food service or custodians, those groups of individuals, those department leaders being able to pick questions off of this bank of questions that were specific to their group and their work. Family and community engagement. If you remember, when we closed out the last coherence plan, that was a survey we did so well on the first time through. The goal, in a sense, was discontinued. So we are exceeding where we want to be or right where we want to be in the green in both. For that customer satisfaction, right now, our different employee groups, for instance, food service and custodians and secretaries are going through a customer service training as a part of professional development days. Some groups have gone through and finished. Others are still going through that. So we will establish a benchmark for them. The vendor doing that has some questions to ask, likely a much shorter survey than our full employee engagement survey based on the vendor we have delivering that. We will be doing a new parent survey this spring with the ability to disaggregate that data. So what that means is, okay, we have a, everybody says we have a huge, high percentage of parents who are reporting positive engagement. Are there groups of parents by race, by whether or not they have a child with a disability that are reporting more or less positive satisfaction or positive engagement with our schools? That data will go hand in hand. We've indicated on the coherence plan that we need to adopt a parent engagement framework. So starting second semester, the leadership team will explore different research-based frameworks that are out there to develop parent partnerships, go through and learn about some of those and select one to be implemented, so to speak. And I don't know if it's so much implemented, but just kind of a set of values and steps that we're going to agree on to take with our parent group to make sure everybody's engaged. And then the customer service module trainings that are happening all go into this goal. Fiscal stewardship, this is the one area that's not updated yet. So the new coherence plan wasn't, or the refresh wasn't done until end of summer. So we will have metrics here, and we will indicate this data come spring. A lot of these don't come. One of the challenges with the metrics is you get information on them at all different times of the year. So this is one where we haven't had a data report out yet. But Mr. Millsor shared, and we discussed here, the district actions currently happening around fiscal stewardship. This is not to say that we're worried that we're in the red here, but just to be fair, we don't, we want to make sure we're only marking metrics on this when we get metrics in, not just by. So that will happen in the spring. Building budgets that provide resources and balancing revenue and expenditures. We've already had conversations here at the board around that. Monitoring that budget and managing our fund balance. So making sure that is all part of, that's what makes the machine run, so to speak. That's how we can deliver the supports that students need. So I'm going to stop. That was a lot of talking, but no coughing, right? I did much better on my second debut. I would like to open this up mostly if you have directors or questions for directors, just overall reactions. At the end of that report, you'll see that I put all the school student improve, our school improvement plan goals, just to see what each building is working on. You're welcome to answer questions about that if you feel like doing it here versus at your liaison meetings.
I have a question about closing gaps, the closing gaps page. Like you said, a lot of these aren't really green because the numbers went down in both, in both categories. But are we going to have to re-change the way we look at this? Because it's going to be, the numbers are bound to be red going forward because if we look at it from this point in time to the next point in time, it's, it's going to, it's unlikely, yes. Like, for instance, in the achievement gaps, disability status, it's 44.3 to 44.3, so it's even. So that gap is closed for now. But, I mean, that doesn't mean our job is done, obviously, but it's, unless, unless it goes, unless the people who are in the gap go above, then that's going to be red.
The other option that could be is that all we need is for that bottom bar to move up. So even if our all-students group would hold steady, right? We don't want that. We want them to grow too. This is a hard metric to talk about. But we are looking for kids, if you're looking at your other graphs on kind of the bottom bar, to make more than a year's growth in a year's time. So if that bottom bar makes more than a year's growth in a year's time, and the top bar makes a year's growth, which would be great, that's our goal for all kids. We would hope that those would merge closer together. So I wouldn't say, no matter what, be in the red. I would hope by when we report on spring, we will see some places where the bottom line closed faster than the top line coming down, if that makes sense, right? Because we hope that all students make progress, but we hope that kids in these demographic groups make faster progress.
I think what he's saying.
Does that make sense?
Maybe I'm thinking of it wrong, but at this point.
It's hard to think about.
At this point, so look at the first achievement gaps. Maybe it's just the first on my page, I don't know. The achievement gaps number, the gap now is zero. 44.3, 44.3. That's not a gap. That's exactly the same.
No, and I would question, right? So some of that comes from missing year data. Some of that, when I look at that, it doesn't jive with the graphs that you saw. Quite frankly, the first part of your question, I think, made the most sense. Should we rewrite on this metric how we're looking at closing gaps? Right? I think that's a fair question. That was a reaction I had, and I'm not trying to be critical. But after we saw the data coming out of pandemic, it doesn't, we have missed years of data. We have a new way to calculate target groups. We have a new, right? Target groups isn't reflected as a concept at all on this metric, and now that's what the state is using solely. I wouldn't, I guess, advocate that we take all of these away, but maybe add to it. So could we have a closing gaps for those target groups across the district or something like that would make more sense to me?
Yeah, if we're going to have these KPIs, it's best if they're meaningful.
Yes.
That's fair. It's a fair, and, you know, I also didn't, I could have just said, look at all the green, but I don't think it's a true demonstration.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to look forward and seeing, well, this isn't going to, it's green now, and we know it's not green, but what's it going to look like going forward? And maybe we have to change.
Not focusing so much on the color, but the metric itself, greater than three points is what we have to spend some time talking about, that, that metric, if that's the right metric.
Yes, that's what I'm, I think that's what I'm asking.
That being said, I appreciate all these KPIs and the way this is laid out. It's an easy thing to receive and ask questions about. And I appreciate all the principals being here, but I don't have any specific questions for you, other than to say thank you. for you, other than to say thank you.
I have, I have a question for, and this is about the closing gaps. I've noticed that for the elementaries, some of them talk about the IEP students, some of them talk about the bottom quartile, some of them. And I don't know if that's what we want to do as a district or if we're coming, if that should be, if closing gaps should be for the bottom quartile, since that's what, since that's what the state report card is, is going to now? Or, and maybe there's a reason why elementary schools look different in that way.
I'll let them answer, but first I just want to say, so everybody had to pick a student achievement goal. So every building, so kind of that goal number one is the same for everybody with different metrics. Then beyond that, buildings based on their data had a choice to pick a closing gaps goal, an employee engagement goal, or a student engagement goal. So I'll let them answer why that looks different, but just so you know, that, that was, they've all worked within kind of those guardrails.
And it might be like how you came to choose that goal. You know, that really is at the root of why it's different. So if someone would like to address that at the elementary, and then we could go middle high on that.
I would speak to Ben Franklin in particular. We had closing gaps around our students with IEPs because that was something that was in our face, is something we need to address. That was something we all, as a school improvement team thought, the data was saying, we need to look at this and pay some close attention to that. It's something that Ben Franklin historically has really worked hard at. We now see it on paper, that's what we need to focus on.
Thank you, Mrs. Shannon. I'm only saying that so that we can hear in the record who was talking.
Is there another elementary principal who'd like to address that? Just indicate who you are before you speak.
And I'm, we looked at the same process, looking at it with our school improvement team. And definitely it became apparent that we had, you know, the pattern was that all of our demographic groups had gaps. We also went and talked with Dr. Mo about the way the report card was moving. So for our group, it made sense to do that lower quartile and capture anybody in that lower quartile section.
I'm Sean LeBlanc, principal at Countrydale. And with my school improvement team, we certainly talked about students in the bottom quartile, but we also recognized that we have gaps for all of our students who are traditionally marginalized. So as a team, we wanted to think about how we can help to reduce that, or you know, make that reduction in that gap for any child who's in one of those groups.
I'm Amanda Obayatoli, principal of the school. We went through the same process as the school improvement team as well. And that's how we landed on that as well.
And Chad Nelson, Principal of the Middle School. We, we also looked at our target groups and kind of in each classroom. And the reason we did that is we wanted, I think, we looked at our board, they say on the growth page, our, our non-proficiency score in the growth for students regardless of the marginalized groups was an area of concern for us. So we decided to go with a target group, well, based on our data.
In the middle school?
Jake Musiak, principal of fourth grade. We don't have a specific group that we identified as the target group for achievement, because one of the things that we've been working on towards our last three years, talking about one year's growth in one year's time for all learners. That's not to say that we don't consider the fact that our students who struggle, who might be in the lowest quartile, need to make accelerated growth. But if we, one of the ways that we look at that is through our development plans and our professional development to say what strategies work best for whom, when and why. So students who might be struggling, that we need to accelerate their growth for. We might approach those students differently than students who might already be demonstrating a very level of progress. But we want to have growth for all of our kids and make sure that all of our kids are growing all the way across. So our school improvement team kind of went that direction of saying, we don't want to target that one particular group, even knowing that it weights heavily into our school report card. We're still considering it, we're still measuring it, we're still monitoring all of those kids, it's just not a specific identified piece that we laid out in our plan.
Thank you.
Yeah. Joey Jonas, Associate Principal of High School. We analyzed our data for student achievement and then looking at that, looked at different subgroups and which group we want to look at for our closing gaps goal. And we centered on students with disabilities and really focused on that college career, college and current, career readiness for our student achievement. So then we looked at that for students with disabilities, there's gaps there in terms of access to high levels of instruction in the upper level courses. We looked at certain elective areas where students with disabilities aren't represented at all. And then we tried to think through how do we help them achieve and get access to some of those other, you know, whether it's college readiness or career readiness, whether it's a certificate or a work-based experience, how we can help students with IEPs get there as well as achieving their classes across standard access data as well. And that was some of the focus and data that we reviewed at high school.
And I want to say that, thanks everyone. I, I think that this, we've been kind of changing the way we go about having the principals here. And I think this is, I think this has been a very good way to do this report, especially as it relates to the coherence plan and having you all together and having this easily digestible improvement plans and having you all here, I think that's, I think that's helpful. And I think this is the best, the best way we've done this so far. So, and maybe other people feel differently, but in terms of going from school to school.
And I know our leaders are looking forward to working with you as a liaison to go deeper and to share how progress, how they're, how they're doing with these goals. And then they're certainly available for any questions you have. I want to thank them for being here tonight. I think it was important for you as a team to have the context of the state report card, the coherence plan, and the assessment report all in one place and, and understand and see how the board takes a great interest in the work that you're doing. So thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
I will say that if there's one, well, I think the tactics though are, is that the next layer, the tactics that go?
It is. That's not on here, but it is the next layer, that is.
That would, might have been, not that we would have gotten into them, but it would, again, be able to, you can see across the district and across the, like the grade schools, how they approach things differently would have been insightful. I, I know we talked about it at the high school, I don't remember what they were, but it would have been, again, give some visibility to those, which are important also.
I can include those for March.
Sure.
We'll do this kind of same process again in March, so I'll make sure tactics are on there.
No, not a lot of them. I don't think it would have added a lot to this, but it would have been manageable.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Mo. That was, that was a long report.
No coughing.
And I would invite our leaders to, to go home. Go home.
You can turn me off, I don't think I need to.
All right, let's move on to the budget document review. Mr. Alex Androvich, please.
Yes. First of all, all the credit goes to Linda and all the work that she did putting all this stuff together. So thank you, Linda. And if you look at this budget proposal, what we're looking at is adding, I think it was five new exhibits. And maybe a few changes where you put some comments, whether it's at the bottom of the page or the side of the page, adding a few numbers. But the key thing to me was the five exhibits, because that's making significant change to the budget, budget presentation. If we start off, in enrollment, there's just a few numbers.
What page is that?
I'm sorry. I was just looking for that.
If you look at, I'll let it on the left there. So four.
Four. Small change there, as we're adding the, the budget changes that are on the bottom of page four, up to the top there. I don't know that that's a lot of extra work. The next major difference is staffing information, which is on page seven. As we're talking about this, does, does anybody have any questions? Before we leave any page, if you go, yeah, what are we doing this for, or whatever?
I just wanted to hear from both of you sort of what your guiding philosophy for, like, when you were going through and making these changes, what are the goals you're hoping to accomplish? So that I can keep that in mind when you're talking about your requested changes.
I think the, well, are you going to?
No, you put it all together first, so no.
Well, I think we wanted to add just some, the, the major change in categories for all revenues and all expenditures, those two main exhibits, one and two.
But why?
Because I think as we asked for some lower level information of expenditure beyond personnel costs, purchase services, non-capital, those four things that are very accountant-like, but not providing any descriptive information.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand that, that addresses the issue of adding categories, but then some of your exhibits are reorganizing categories that already exist. So talk to me about why that's a good idea.
And, okay, so first of all, there's two, exhibit two and three is really about adding some additional categories. The other changes, in hearing our discussion, we wanted to have a little bit more personnel information integrated into the program areas.
Sure.
So if you look at exhibit five, it includes in a personnel FTE count with each program.
Okay.
And it also, it takes, if you look at page seventeen, it takes that description that was hanging to the left and just moves that, so it's with each program. So you just, it flows. We just added a personnel line and just moved that description with the program to make it, so it flows better.
Linda, you said exhibit five and then you said page seventeen?
I guess.
So your guiding principles were improving flow and adding some additional information?
Yes.
Okay.
I was looking for additional detail.
Additional, yes, which is?
Yes. And sometimes when you look at this information, without the detail, you have one perspective of it. Like Linda mentioned, there's salaries, benefits.
Yeah.
And you see all those different numbers and we have one, I think there's a page on here where we combine it and give total salaries, total benefits. But what is the detail of benefits? I mean, if you don't know that it's health, health insurance, life insurance, retirement, and whatever else, it's just a different perspective looking at the information.
Cool. Yeah, when I was going through, I noticed that some of your recommended changes seemed to have to do mostly with formatting and flow. Some had to do with a reorganization of information that's already presented. And then, it does, some of them do. And then some of them are that added detail specifically around benefits and I want to say like purchased expenses, like computers, it was more of a supplies type thing, like telephones.
Right. And, and one of the examples that we have here, when I looked at it, it talked about purchase services. And line number one was purchase services. It was like $3.8 million was the first column. And that was such a big chunk. And so to me, that didn't give any more clarification. It didn't give a different perspective. It just.
Yeah, that's what, that was basically these things in exhibit three.
Yeah, and so.
I'd have to say going through this, for those three categories, when it comes to improving flow, I think that that's kind of Mr. Millsr's business. And so in terms of saying, we want this section to be presented at the bottom of the page rather than the top, I think that's a little bit nitpicky. And then in terms of additional information, like what you were just talking about, I totally can get on board of that. That's most of what exhibit three is. The problem is some of your other exhibits would be duplicating information that already exists elsewhere. And so if we're going to create redundancy within the budget document, it has to be very clearly labeled as redundant, so I don't get confused, doesn't become confusing.
What's redundant?
So for example, in exhibit three, page two, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Page two of the whole report?
I'm trying to find where I started them.
No, this is page, oh boy.
So for example, fund 10 expenses, teacher salaries, item 169, we currently have that. It's just broken down by school or by grade level, elementary school, middle school, high school. And I don't know that losing that view of the detail is necess, you know, we would lose that were we to go to this completely, but you are wanting to add this, not erase the previous way of doing it. Is that correct?
We're not going to lose the, the program information that you see that starts on page, I'm going to get the bottom of the pages here, seventeen, I guess I should look at that. Seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, those are all program pages. We're not losing those. We're just taking that information and we're slicing it a different way and then showing it on the exhibit three, page one and two.
Yeah, which, which is fine, but it is redundant. So it's being present, the same numbers are being presented in two different ways.
In a different way.
Which is fine, but I think you have to be very careful when, if you're including that to say, so people don't get confused by seeing the same number presented two different ways. Wait a second, your salary's over, you've already presented salaries and now you've got salaries again. Do you understand my, what I'm saying?
Mr. Millsr, what, would you care to comment on, on?
My concern.
On Dr. Beer's concern and any, and anything, any and everything.
Yeah, this really is.
Yeah, I had, I had some of the same concerns going through. The, the enrollment page, we had talked about that already and we're adding that.
And I know, yeah, I know that, that wouldn't be exactly as it is on this. We talked about this for a second before the meeting, but I know you guys are working on this because we did come to a consensus on, about changing the personnel part of it. So I know that's being worked on, so.
Right. And on the staffing information, we agreed to bring the groups in and give totals, but we don't have FTEs for any of the hourly groups and it's not in our system. So to change over, to be able to add those together would be a lot of work on our part. And I'm not sure, I mean, it's not in our system.
And I'm not sure it adds much.
Right.
To that level.
Right.
But, yes.
Other than that, we were, we were going to add in the other groups like we had in the previous version. The all funds for budget adoption, one thing I had is that if the, if the board decides that you want the information from exhibit one, that it not replace that page of the budget.
Can you direct me to which page exhibit one is on?
Fourteen is what's in there.
Yeah, page fourteen, it says replace with exhibit one.
Are you keep it, you're saying? You would keep it then?
Oh, here we go.
You would keep it in addition to exhibit one?
Yeah, I actually find that presentation not problematic.
Well, I could, you can keep it. I just thought in the effort to not, you know, to keep things, add a page, take a page away, to keep it, not, you certainly can keep it.
In, in looking at exhibit one, though, the top is total taxes. So we have the tax information on page thirty-one of the current document and it's substantially the same form as this. And we include more years. So I'm not sure why we would change that.
I had the same question.
The existing fund balance information, go ahead.
Why did you want to change it?
What makes this useful is that it flows in terms of, you have the levy and then you have the calculation, it flows right into the tax bill and then it flows into fund balance. So this is, this is the, a very high level view of what the impact of the budget is on one page.
So you just would rather have it sooner in the budget rather than at the end?
Yes. I mean, I look at this as, let's go high level and drill down. This is a high level, we drill down, it shows the actual calculation of the tax bill, it shows the fund balance, it's all, this is perfect.
I, I can see why you think that, but I hope you can appreciate that for me, it makes very little difference. To me, it's like, here's all the work we did, da, 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 da. And in the end, this is how much it's going to cost. It's all there. But anyway.
If that was important, I'd, I'd be happy to move page thirty-one to.
Yeah, move it up.
The front of the presentation. And then we would have this tax information. The existing fund balance information in the document is listed with each fund. If the board wants to see that all together as well, I would certainly be happy to create that schedule and have it up front if that's the way you'd like it. The tax levy section in the middle. The tax levy section in the middle uses equalized value, so this is extremely misleading. People's taxes change based on assessed value, not equalized. So you could have calculations here that tell people their taxes are doing one thing and in actuality they do another thing or not as much as that. So I would, I would never put this in there like that. And I think it's too much, too much to be showing people the equalized value in all these things. I, I did that at one point in the budget presentations years ago and a group that was against the district but wanted to see a ton more detail, they came up to me afterwards and said, don't do that again, you're just, I don't, I don't even understand what you're talking about, you're just making it look like you're making things up. Just tell me what the, tell me what it is, what's it going to do? So that's what we changed to doing, here's what's going to happen with taxes as we project it. So again, if that's more important to the board to have up front, I'd certainly be willing to put that information up front.
I don't care.
Anybody else have comments?
Well, I would, I don't want to debate with you, Jim, but equalized value is the basis, it's a key element in the aid formula, is it not?
Can you explain how it's a key element?
Because it's based on equalized value per pupil, is it not?
What is?
The aid.
Right, but it's a different year. So first of all, no one knows that. And the second, if you do know that, you probably don't get the nuance of what it applies to, so you're getting the wrong thing out of this every time.
We could take it out if you want. I mean, I'm saying is I didn't make this up, I got this from another district, so it can take it out, I don't care. But I would like, yes, bring it up please, if you could. Your offer to bring this up, I'm on board with that, you want to take out equalized value, fine.
No, I think taking into consideration Linda's point and Mr. Millsor's point, we definitely don't want to create confusion. Because as a taxpayer, if I'm looking at a budget document, not a lot of people do it, but if they do it, they want as simple as completely watered down, simple information where tell me is the school tax levy increasing or decreasing? That's the bottom question period, you know?
I think that's, I think that's a good reason to move the, move the information, move that information on page thirty-one to the top because those people that only want to look at a bottom line number, look at that number and then they can be done and those that want more detail will look further down. I think that, I think that's the flow question to me, that's the flow, that's the flow part of it.
I couldn't agree more. I want to know the bottom line.
And to that point, Dr. Khan, I think looking at the budget from the first time I ever did as a parent, I don't know, five years ago or something, to what it became in this last year with the kind of redesign, that's, I think that alone made it a hundred times easier to read as just a regular person who doesn't look at budgets for my job on a day-to-day basis. And I think it already is, you know, much more user-friendly than it used to be. If we needed to add some more detail and add some more information, that's going to help people understand it, that's great, but I think where we are from where we were is already a great improvement.
And if we wanted to know that equalized value number, could we ask you for it?
Yes.
For me, it wouldn't, I don't have enough under. Okay, we won't talk about that.
Nope, it's gone, I can find it, I know where to find it.
Perfect.
All right.
So in agreement though, you're going to pull this up, Jim, just take off that middle section.
Bring that, I'm going to bring the tax page up to the front and then do you want another thing showing all fund balances together rather than, well, not rather than, but in addition to all the fund balances listed on the funds as we go through?
Sure. All together.
Yes.
It's the summary page.
Yes. Okay.
And we could have the change on there, Jim, also, next to the.
Percent change?
Just a dollar change and percent, and that's, I remember what percent, but.
We have that, I think we have that for almost all of the things in there, so that's fine.
So then, yes, okay.
All right, exhibit two, which is.
The revenue detail.
Yep, which is the next page. So we, instead of this page, we would just go with a different level of detail on the following page. And I don't, and I think Alan, you might want to point out the change in column headers also that you want.
Oh, I was interested in having what we had. I'm, I'm not there yet, what page is this on?
This in your PDA.
Sixteen, fifteen and sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay.
You got it?
Got it, thank you. I was very interested in getting a budget compared to actual. And they have, in this one, it's the second column and the third column, which is nineteen twenty budget compared to the nineteen twenty unaudited. Although it's unaudited, these are the actual numbers that we would present. I don't think the auditors make a great deal of changes to the work that Jim does. I think Jim just puts it together marvelously.
Would that be something you could do, Jim?
We can certainly do that. We talked about doing that on the, the one that we were adopting. On this one, I don't know, your, your, your point in doing that, Alan, is, is, is just seeing?
When you, when you ever put together a budget, you always want to see how you did versus the budget.
But this is our revenue, it has no, it has nothing to do with what we did.
Then the, the next page, which continues on with this, because it's a three-page thing, the first one is revenue, the next two are expenses.
Oh, I see, it's all on the same.
Yeah, it's, it's one basic report. It's just how are we doing audit versus budget? Now, when we budget certain numbers here in the revenue area, we're going to be right on. I mean, it's just the way it is. And other numbers, we might be off a little bit. It might be interesting to know, how did we miss? But most of our revenue comes from the state, they determine what it's going to be, we budget one thing, they tell us what it's actually going to be. Do we really control much of our revenue at all?
Do we control the levy?
Yeah, you control the levy and then we're, we're estimating everything else except for aid that the state is going to give us.
But you control what the levy is, but if you tell the, the city that we want fifty million dollars, the levy's going to be what the levy's going to be, the assessments are going to be what the assessments are going to be, fifty million dollars is what we're going to get. Right. So in the revenue area, I'm not so concerned about these column headings, but because this is one report, in the expense area is where it makes more sense, have some idea what's going on.
I think I second that because I think the expense report, the way they have the module, is detailed by each everything separately, you know? So for example, for a, not for a general person, but maybe at a board level, it will be kind of, it can add some information, okay, you know, how much, you know, how much we did budget, how much we did spend, I think it gives everything line by line, everything separately, kind of, rather than just lumping up into one thing.
Interesting, I think it's just a difference in the way our minds work. For me, especially the expense pages, line by line, I'm not saying I won't support adding it in, I'm just saying, knowing the overall expense for water in the district, it, it's more meaningful to me to see it broken down by school and program. But that's just because that's how I look at it and I, yeah, I'm, so.
Well, for example, we're changing our health insurance from an insured plan to a self-insured plan. And so if we can see how, look at how our health insurance, and I'm making these numbers up because obviously we don't have them yet, our health insurance was going up year after year as we ran an insured plan and now with the self-insured plan, we were expecting a big savings and it didn't develop.
No, I think I, I agree with you in terms of what we expected and what actually happened. I'm on board with that.
Okay.
I'm just talking about the overall format of exhibit three and two. I'm not as in love with it as you guys are. I would hate to see it completely replace what we already have. If you wanted to.
It's in addition.
If you wanted to have it in addition, super. And that's what I misunderstood coming into this meeting, I thought you wanted to replace it. Anybody else want to talk about two or three?
I think we're, one, is this, okay?
Okay.
I will be fascinated to see how it affects our conversations at budget meeting next year.
Yeah, I would too.
I don't think it will very much, but.
I think it will decrease the questions because we'll have.
I think it will multiply the questions by ten or a hundred because there's so many more questions to ask. I, I don't think it's a good idea, I think you know I don't think it's a good idea, this is the level that I'm at with the budget, it's not where the board belongs with the budget. The board needs to be at the higher level, the total salaries, even if we said that, it's my job to make it work out. If during the year, it's like we need to, we need to add some special ed aids and I've got to have money to move from here to here to do that, based on this format and we're going to be looking at every one of these, you start to say, oh, you can't do it, can't get special ed aids, I can't do that, it's not in my budget. I want the budget to come out.
But is our budget fifty million dollars or is our, or is our budget, every single line is cast in concrete here? If we do the every single line is cast in concrete, we will just close the school system down because you won't be able to operate.
Well, that's what you're asking to do.
No, we are not.
No, I'm asking for the information, not to hold his feet to the fire on every single line.
There's no control, there's no control on these lines.
How do we clarify that that is different than the budget we're approving?
There'll be variances, it's, budget is a, is a guess, we expect variances. We just need to know the range of them.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
It just provides context of where things are going. Well, we're all adults here, I don't think we're going to be over questioning.
Yeah, but this is going to be a public document.
This is not the first time this information is shared with the public. These documents, these are from other school districts that present this information. We are not leading, cutting edge here. We're not bleeding edge, we're doing some.
How many citizens actually ask for the budget document, Jim? How many times have you been approached?
Posted.
Right, but I mean, how many times have citizens called questioning what's on that budget document?
I probably haven't had a call in ten years.
Okay.
Are you asking, are you saying that there's going to be, there's going to be a multitude more of questions at the board level or are you saying there's going to be a multiple questions from a different level? I assume you're saying from the board level.
I think the questions would come from the board level, I think you could get community questioning things. If we've got food on here, like what, what is that? Is that student food, you're buying food for who? Postage, why are you still mailing things out? Why don't you do everything by email? I mean, it just starts to snowball and it's these littlest things. You're doing employee recognition, that's what you're spending? I, I could have, you know, I could really use that money if you'd just give me my tax money back on that, I don't believe in giving people money. It, it invites all of these nitpicky questions where you're just trying to understand, but it, it quickly gets out of control, I think. And I think we'll be, we'll be trying to answer a lot more questions and I think it, it just creates an issue on, on several levels.
Is there a way to, is there a way to provide that three pages of detail to the board and, and not to, and not to the public? I mean, you can, they can get it if they want it, they could get it if they ask for it, but there's different, there are different, in board docs, there are different, there's administrative contact and administrate, administrative, wow, content and executive content.
I think you're opening a can of worms if you say there's budget information available to us that's not.
We're not saying there is, we're not saying there is.
It would be a way to try it and then we can.
I mean, there's, there is different, we get different, different levels of reports and lots of things.
Okay, okay.
That if somebody asked for that information, which apparently they haven't done in ten years, then they could get it if they wanted to, but we would have that extra, we would have that extra three pages of information in our report.
And I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I guess I'm curious to know how much extra work are those extra three pages?
But it, it probably wouldn't be exactly like these numbers, many of them would be the same, but I can see on some of them, we don't use the numbers or they don't mean the same.
And you're similar.
Yeah, right.
You're using exactly that look of that page.
Right, right. So we could do this, it wouldn't take more than a couple hours, I think, for each of these.
So then the question is, could we have that as a separate addendum available to the board and the public upon request and then should we?
That seems like a better way to do it, I think, than to, to Jim's point, if you put it out there and then you have all these questions, then are we going to come back and say, ooh, we didn't like that, now we want to take it away? And then that becomes, oh, they're, they're hiding budget information out because they don't want us to see it.
But we're not, we're not pushing it out.
We don't push it out, but it's available and people know it's available, I know people who look at the budget.
They look at, they're looking at the same budget they're looking at now, basically.
Correct. I think Anne's saying if we were to include it in the, she's saying the opposite of, she's positing a, the opposite situation from what you suggested.
I don't think so.
Well, no, what I'm, what I'm saying, yeah, what I'm saying is if we, you know, to Jim's
point, you know, we could add this, we could add all sorts of information, but then if all of a sudden we do start getting all those questions, we decide it's too overwhelming or, you know, whatever, and then all of a sudden we come back and have a similar talk about, okay, we want to change our budget document and then we're going to take it out, now have we given information, now we're taking it back, does that look like we're trying to hide something?
I see what you're saying.
So maybe, I guess the way to.
But apparently nobody's asked for that information in ten years, why would they ask for it now?
Because we're talking about it.
Or because, or because it's in the document. So what I guess I'm saying is if there's a way to do it like you suggested, you know, there's a report specifically for the board, maybe that's a good way to see if that answers our questions or causes us as a board to have more questions or, you know, have a better understanding, great, but without completely changing the budget document that is the public document.
I think to Dr. Khan's point, like we have a document that is used and required to be used by DPI for approval, so that's one document. That, that, you can have a document that's posted publicly that the, that communicates this budget to people in a way they can understand it and then you can have a document with a lot more detail for those who like that information. But I think that the public wants to be able to understand, you know, the budget well. So I don't think it's obscure to have different documents for different purposes to communicate the budget in the school district.
What would you two say about that?
I'd, I'd be fine with it.
Yeah, we're going to get, if we're going to get the information, it doesn't have to be in there.
Going back though to the person, the, if we came in above or below budget, I think that might be a valuable thing to have on some of the higher level numbers in the main budget document.
Well, those numbers are there.
But, but here on this one, like health insurance, they budgeted twelve million, seven, sixty-nine, spent thirteen million, one sixty-five, that, this does not lock them into twelve million, seven, whatever.
And we all understand that, but. Okay, so that's a solution for, was that two and three?
Two and three would be internal report for first time through?
Sure. And exhibits two and three are doable for you, Jim?
Yeah.
Hour and a half or something? Oh, rounded up to three hours.
Exhibit four just basically takes the, the program information that follow and just puts it all on one page. At the top is the expenditure and at the bottom is the personnel.
Another summary type of a page?
Correct, high level, drill down, and then the following page is drill down. But it puts it all, you can see the changes among the programs, where the resources are going, shifting, all on one page.
Exhibit five was the one I just couldn't follow at all.
I couldn't follow exhibit five at all. Exhibit four, I mean.
Are we going with four?
I, I'm fine with it. It's, again, I, I think it's a bit redundant, but you like the sort of.
High level, drill down.
But you've already said the FTE is going to be a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it?
Yeah, so we really don't track that information. That's we all put together manually.
The top we could pull together easily enough if that's what the board wants.
So the personnel part of it's going to be something different and, and that's, and that's a, that we know is.
Right, personnel you have to.
That's what we've already sort of had consensus on, right?
Yes.
So they'll be working on that, whatever format makes the most sense for.
At whatever level you can calculate.
That's accurate. Okay, try and explain exhibit five.
Exhibit five, okay, do you have the next page?
What is the next page?
It's the fir, it starts with elementary classrooms. It's the first program in the series.
Yeah, exhibit five is page twenty-two.
Twenty-two, twenty-two of the PDF, all right.
So it basically, if you could put that next to the following page, you'll be able to track the changes better. It basically, because this exhibit five starts with elementary classroom instructional technology, which is the same thing as you see the following page.
When you say the following page, you mean the general fund?
Page twenty-three.
Yes.
Yeah, the general fund.
Seventeen, yeah, it's got seventeen on the bottom.
Okay.
So it takes that same program description, but it adds description. There's a description over here, but it puts it at the top. It adds a personnel count line. It apparently is not doable, but, but you could add some personnel though, Jim. You said it just would include teachers, or it would be a subset of the personnel.
Well, I mean, we have salaries already.
I'm just saying you would just repeat what you have there. I'm not asking him to change anything in terms of the calculation of these numbers, but it would just take this thing that was to the left, that bar there, and just slide it under the numbers.
I think that's getting a little nitpicky.
Well, it would...
What are you doing with the information?
Yeah.
It would put his, what was, what was to the left was really explaining some of the major changes that were happening to the numbers above. So it put it right where it was.
I mean, at some point, we have to say, this is his document. And so if, if that's where he wanted to put the narrative, I kinda think that's a little nitpicky.
Well, and I think that, I think that we're, I think that this is, we're putting the cart before the horse with that a little bit. I think we wanna look at the, at the personnel part of this, what changes are being made this year, and maybe, maybe we wanna make, maybe, maybe that would be...
That might change everything.
Sufficient, maybe not. And then if it's not, then we do something like this, but let's look at what those changes are. Because we want it to be incremental.
I agree with that.
So when you're talking about the personnel changes, are you looking at page eleven of the PDF or adding the other employees, like administrators?
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys are gonna be presenting something sort of entirely new. That's something we reached consensus on a meeting or two ago.
Right, yes.
So I don't know that it's necessarily represented in any of the exhibits that you gave us.
That's what I'm saying, right, yes. I think that we're going to see those changes, and then, and then we may react to those, and we, we'll react to those, but there may not be another reason for change. That would be my... The next year, we look at it, we go, you know what, this doesn't add anything. Let's dump it. You know, we can do that, and we should do that.
I like that attitude. Thank you for explaining it.
Yes.
For all the changes.
So I think we're, I think we've, I think we're where we wanna be.
Okay.
Mr. Milzer, are you where, where you wanna be roughly?
Not gonna hold you to it. So I'm, on exhibit five, I am not doing any of this.
Correct, right.
And then the only other change was in the special education fund that changed the categories so that it would mimic the board report.
The PDF? Page thirty-one.
Thirty-one of the PDF?
Yeah, what's the page number on the, oh.
Page number on the thing.
On the PDF, thirty-one.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five.
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-five. You wrote twenty-five, so in your hand right now.
I think, again, it's similar to the general fund. It gives a more descriptive, understandable... Right, it would add more similar categories to what were displayed in the general fund. Those are our major funds. I'm just saying, maybe you could just add it, Jim, onto exhibit two, three? Two, two, three, although I know you're very, it's very fund-formatted, but you could include it there. Because it's a separate report anyway, correct? It's not gonna be part of this. So you could just include that as part of exhibit two and three. Just include special revenue below that with similar categories. I'm assuming your reports, the reporting tool already tags these things. You would just run a similar report for special revenue. And it's, again, it's all...
So these are expenses, not revenue, right?
Well, you would do it for revenue and expenditures. There's probably not much on the revenue side other than the federal funds. I'm guessing, I don't...
Well, I'm just wondering, like, do we, well, whatever, it doesn't matter.
Well, they should match, so it should...
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, really, it's...
Mr. Milzer, what do you say?
Yeah, I would rather not run another one of those for, for this fund separately. It's not that large a fund. I, I think you'd need, I think you just need to decide if you wanna see salaries, benefits, purchase services, or if you wanna see it as instruction and support services. And I'll put it right in here.
I like instruction and support because one thing I sort of personally do with the budget document and did was to try and figure out how much of the budget is student-facing versus support. And so I don't know if that's a good metric to follow, but it's one that I follow. And so I like having it that way. The one that, whatever. I'm running out of words.
I can be on board with that.
I can too.
Me too.
I can be on board this time. Just keep in mind that special education's begun. Certainly has increased attention, as you saw in the state report, and also at the state level, it's, it's a more of a focus. I think we need to be more aware of what is special ed and what it's about and what those costs are, but...
It might be a good thing to make sure that we ask Mrs. Cody to, you know...
I think that, that will be, let's tackle that one next year. You're right, because if this is getting more attention, maybe next year, maybe the year after, we're gonna have to look at it and say, we should get more information.
Good enough.
Great progress. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Milzer. Board Clerk's Report, Election Notice. Ms. Larson, please.
Notice is hereby given that there is an election to be held in the Franklin Public School District on Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, and the following offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed. The term of office for school board members three years, beginning on Monday, April 25th, 2022. School Board Member Mike Sprague, School Board Member Debbie Larson. Notice is further given that a campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, in the office of the School District Clerk, 8255 West Forest Hill Avenue, Franklin, Wisconsin. Notice is further given that if a primary is necessary, the primary will be held on Tuesday, February 15th, 2022. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Treasurer's Report is available in the Board Docs Library. Eleven School Board Liaison Reports, Personnel and Policy, Policy 4040, Equal Employment Opportunity. Dr. Khan, please.
So we are reading two policies. The first one is the equal employment opportunity. It was last revised in 2016. There's not much of a change in the language except including protected groups, including gender identity, and accommodating religious practices. So there's not much of change in the policy itself. Just a slight change in language to accommodate the, you know, Wisconsin statute. So I'll request motion to approve if everybody have read the policy.
All right, Mrs. Wachowski.
Question. I did ask about the arrest record and conviction record, which surprised me. Was there a change in state law that requires us to do this, or why are we...
No, that has been a part of the state law for quite some time. So the law is that you can't necessarily discriminate against an individual for their arrest or conviction record. In specific circumstances, it can be considered something to review if it's substantially related to the role that they're going to be applying for. So, for example, in a district like ours, if someone has a conviction or arrest record that's related to abuse of a child or something similar, obviously, we would not employ them within the district and wouldn't want them around our students.
I had a problem with eliminating political affiliation. That is a very divisive area in our country today, and I think we should still list it as an area that we were not, we would not discriminate.
So I don't think the intention was to eliminate political affiliation at all. I think it was just...
Redlined through it.
It was rephrased later on in the policy just to say that attend a meeting or participate in any communication about religious matters or political matters.
That's attending a meeting. It's not the same thing. There was just a poll that came out. They talked to people, would you work for or hire someone who was, they were talking Democrats or Republicans, and I couldn't believe how high the percentages were. They were in the thirties and, or higher in some cases. And I thought that was just terrible. You're hiring a person to do a job. What do you care what he does at the poll? So I, I don't want to eliminate political affiliation. I think it's important, and especially in our country, as divided as we are along political lines.
But it's, it's the, it's the employment. So for example, irrespective of the political affiliation, whether you're Democrat, Republican, Green Party, Labor Party, whatever party it is, you will not be discriminated. That's what it says here.
But, no, it struck out.
Yeah, but if you...
It's because you're silent on it, doesn't mean you're not...
If you read it, basically, what it is saying is that you will not be discriminated if you decline to attend a political party, for example. If a Democrat comes and says, you have attended a party, and you say no, and you apply to come to Franklin Public School District, you will not be declined employment just because you declined Democrat or Republican. That's what it says.
This is talking about personnel hiring and administration will not discriminate against applicant or employee on the basis of, they start listing them all out, and we're dropping political affiliation. And when we, we talk about it again, it's declining to attend a meeting. I'm talking about hiring a person. If a person came in and applied for a job and was wearing a MAGA hat, just, you know, something real obvious, and we go, we don't want any of those people here, that would be discriminating.
So let's, let's flip it on its head. If that happened, if somebody came in and had like a, let's give them a lapel pin, so at least they were dressed appropriately for the interview, and they had a reasonable belief that they weren't hired for the job because of that, would they have a case based on our policy?
I don't believe so, because it also says at the end, or any other reason prohibited by state or federal law. So that really encompasses all of the possible things that are under all of state and federal law. So I don't believe that they would necessarily have a case.
Is there a reason we struck political affiliation for declining to attend?
Yeah, I'm not sure what that means.
It's just such an odd turn of phrase. Is that...
Is there a reason, is there a reason the language is like that?
It was rephrased at a recommendation for our policy. So it was reviewed, and that was the recommendation that they made.
By legal counsel.
For our legal counsel.
I think by, by definition, it's just what is it, right? So we've been through this before with other policy language. If, if there's ambiguous words that are hard to define or leave it open to interpretation, they typically have us remove those words.
Oh, so they suggest that what is down here in green is more specific in a legal sense than the word political affiliation?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't buy that at all.
Yeah, but...
What a crock. And to put that, or any other reason prohibited by state or federal law, then why don't we go with, on the basis of age, race, or any other reason prohibited by state or federal law, and make this much shorter?
We absolutely, we, we could do that. That is an option as well, if you would prefer to significantly shorten the policy. It was just reviewed based on the fact that it has been more specific in labeling things in the past, but we could possibly just do any, what's the right word for it? But any applicant or base, on the basis of, even without the specifics at the beginning, any state or federal protected group.
Do we have any additional groups in our policy that are not in that category?
We are pretty all encompassing, so we are pretty long with ours.
Did we, did we want to change this largely for the gender identity part?
So we did an addition and we removed one, so not specifically for that piece. That was just added to show that we are an inclusive work environment. And we also removed the phrase handicap, because that is becoming a not preferred phrase.
Sure.
So we removed that.
See, I also hated gender identity being added to it. That's virtue signaling. I don't think we need to do that.
I disagree with you on that.
Okay.
So then, because we disagree on things, should we just narrow it? Can we kick this back to the committee and see if, maybe like just narrowing it and say any federal or state protected?
I think if legal counsel has said this is what would be best, I would trust our legal counsel more than I would trust my own personal opinion about whether I like a word or not a word, but...
That's fair.
I mean, I guess if we kick it back to committee, does it have to go back to legal counsel to then be reevaluated that way too? So that's extra steps and extra expense. I...
Well, I think it should.
My, my, my tendency is to believe if our legal counsel has said this is what the policy should be, who am I to judge legal counsel? I don't have that expertise, so I would trust legal counsel.
And if somebody applied for a job and...
Yes, they reviewed this.
And said, I didn't get the job because of my lapel pin, they would have a leg to stand on the way this policy is written, because it does include that tagline or any group protected by state or federal law.
Makes you mad.
No.
I think, you know, when I read it, we are just saying, by defrasing is that, irrespective of your political affiliation, irrespective of gender identity, irrespective of your race, religion, whatever it is, we are equal opportunity employer, period. We will not categorize you or discriminate you based upon your, just because I didn't enter a Republican or Democrat particularly convention doesn't make me ineligible. Whether I attended or not, that's my personal thing. Outside of what happens, the school district has a personal affiliation, and the school district have no jurisdiction to impose what I'm a personal believing in affiliation. That's what it says here. If you say here, if you, for example, decline to attend a religious meeting, okay, that's my personal thing. If I decline to attend a political matters, it's my personal thing. The school district has no authority to decline me a position just because of my affiliation. That's what it says here.
I agree with Mrs. Zupersky in that either we should keep it as it's written, as it's freshly written, or, or to, or we, or we cut it down to almost nothing.
So, you know, in working with our legal counsel over the years, they're really deliberate about the words they choose based on litigation that has already occurred. So they, they include things for that reason often, because this has been litigated. Gender identity has been litigated. Declining to participate in a meeting is likely to have been litigated, which is why it's here.
But gen, gender identity, and I agree with Maxud that if we're gonna be all-inclusive and we're not going to discriminate when we're hiring anybody, why do we have to put some of these things in here?
I think that it shows that we're an inclusive employer. For people that may be reading the, reading the policy, they like, they want to see all of these things listed out, so that we are identifying specific items. It, it shows our, it's our inclusive mindset.
I think it also protects the district. For example, if anybody comes and says, but I was not given a job because I belong to so-and-so group, we can say that, excuse me, that was not the case. You were declined the job because maybe the competencies or whatever it is, not because we have a policy which we will go to hire irrespective of your nationality. So I think it protects this district from any litigation. That's what it is.
No, I don't think it does at all. What you do protects the district, not what you write. This is just throwing it out there. So if somebody reads this, they go, oh, they'll hire me, or the fact that I'm whatever. But, but it's what you do protects the district.
I, I agree with you, Alan, but this would be a starting point.
Yeah, fine. I... I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy forty forty as presented.
So moved.
Yeah, second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Personnel and Policy 3810, securing legal counsel. Dr. Khan, please.
Again, there is not much of a change in the policy of securing legal counsel. There's just an addition of it, what designee... There's just an addition of it, what designee. Usually, the administrator has kind of, you know, the one who has kind of approaches the legal counsel. But also designee, for example, if the, or the administrator designates, for example, the assistant superintendent or the principal of a school, or any board member, for example, achieve. And so that's what it is, so. And this policy was revised in 2012, I think? Yeah, 2012. So that's just a minor change in the language of the policy. It's the same policy. The administrator usually seeks the legal counsel if needed. The president of the board has the right. And any of the school board members, if you have to approach the president to kind of, if you need, for example, legal counsel, that's what it's all about. So it is not change in the policy, except as it might say the language of the policy.
I move that we accept the policy as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have a Board Liaison Report?
I didn't. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Wachowski, please.
I did attend the SWSA meeting this last Tuesday. I know, I'll just give a brief legislative update. The governor did veto two pieces of legislation. One was the publication of all of our curriculum, so we're not doing that. The other thing was a reading readiness bill, and that also is not going forward. The S3 refunds have been released, at least 95% of them have. And is that the number that we got from Judy?
No, that's a different.
That's a different one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and 5% is still being kicked around? Also, the Equity Subcommittee released their report. So, and I think in the future, we're going to try and incorporate some kind of legislative discussion at each board meeting, and we're still working that out.
That will be, I think, second meeting of the month.
Yeah, also, we heard from Children's Hospital, what was going on there as far as COVID. And Dr. Underley, the new state superintendent, kind of shared what was going on in her first couple months. And I did share the slide deck, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I hope you appreciate that.
I always appreciate it, thanks, love.
Thank you, Mrs. Sapersky.
Yep, I had a school visit with Robinwood, so we kind of did a lot of that earlier. But just a couple things that we, we were talking about, like specific tactics that they, at, Robinwood with their, you know, their school improvement goals, they're really looking at their student engagement and academic achievement, and working with some student focus groups to look at all that data that we've saw for a long time tonight, and work with, you know, how can they focus their, their learning around those target groups and what do those students really need? And they're really working to really connect individually with the students. And it was, I mean, it'll be interesting to see how it, how it goes to the school year. Went and looked through, I think we visited four or five classrooms that day. It was right before Thanksgiving, so there was a lot of excitement with the kids before Thanksgiving.
Dr. Beer, please.
I met with Ms. Neese and Sundstrm. We meet monthly, so I always appreciate their time. I was updated on some of the professional development that they've been doing, which was sort of mentioned about how that curriculum review process is now being embedded in the professional development days. I was very impressed with the degree of care and thought that's being put into these days to attempt to make them meaningful and useful for all of the different groups who attend them, district-wide. I also did, and tell me if I spoke out of turn, Boer, but I said that in the future, if there are significant programmatic or curricular changes that are going to be brought before the board, we might want to move them up by a meeting so that if there are questions prior to voting on them, we have time to address those. This was after our last meeting, so I don't know if you all agree with that or not, but.
I think that's.
In other words, not approving classes and courses, like the week before the course catalog has to be published.
Yes.
That is all.
And I attended the PAS meeting for the middle school. It's the PTO kind of meeting. There are only four parents, I think, who attended, and they kind of, they do raise the money by, on the concession stand. They do kind of appreciate the teachers. So very dedicated parents, you know, few of them, but very dedicated. They have a budget, they kind of, you know, they have a revenue and all that stuff, so very organized. It was pleased to see how they have kind of been working, you know, tirelessly, as all the volunteers, you know, doing this good job of, you know, providing, you know, gift cards to the teachers, appreciating, you know, some lunch and all that stuff, so. And it was good to see that.
And you also attended the vaccine clinic.
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Oh.
Well, you worked there.
That's nice of you.
Again, you know, I think it was just to see how the middle schoolers are getting the vaccinations and all that stuff. It was very good to see. The nurses were there, and I think I spoke personally to the Life Change Pharmacy, just getting his input, and he was very appreciative of how the district provided the platform and the easy kind of, you know. He really appreciated how, because he's also going to different school districts. He said Franklin is amazing in providing this platform. It was so smooth, it was so well organized, so he really thanked the school district as such for the providing such a very, very efficient, you know, smooth platform. I think close to 300 students got vaccinated, had both of sorts. So that's a good, you know, you know, progress.
So you didn't administer the vaccines?
No.
Just don't give shots.
Was I actually going to do that?
I intentionally did administer that because, you know, if I would administer that.
I know, I'm just teasing you.
I attended, I attended the Knowledge-a-thon at Pleasant View. It was very well attended by volunteers, and it was fun to see the kids so excited about being able to answer the questions and work in teams, so it was a fun day. Anybody else?
Again, visits and community things, huh?
Well, school and community engagement reports, yes, please.
Well, I was just going to say, there was a band concert last night that was thrilling and festive. And if you're feeling the need to get in the spirit next week, I want to say it's Tuesday and Thursday, but don't quote me on that, let's check our calendars. There's an orchestra one night and choral concert the other night. So if you're needing a little holiday spirit, highly recommend.
Which I always appreciate you putting the upcoming events at the end of your weekly blast.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're the best.
Also, I wanted to request if any, I'm also trying at my workplace and my different friend groups, if anybody has any church groups, any friends group, if they want to promote the Franklin Education Foundation, which Anne is kind of the liaison on from the board, I'll request, just spread the word, you know, they do a good job. Of, so definitely, if I won't see charitable, you know, not-for-profit, so definitely, any funds, any donations, it'd be appreciated.
Anyone else?
So, are we all at the football game?
Absolutely.
I was at the football.
Oh, have we not had a meeting since?
Was that since?
No, we haven't.
We have done.
Hey, it's been a couple months for Franklin, and it's been cold, yeah. It was very exciting, it was great, and I cried, and all of it.
It was super exciting, it was very cold.
Great game.
This is what Kowski didn't even recognize.
I know, I did.
So bundled up.
And I thought it was really great, actually, I'll just say that they, you know, obviously, the football team was there, but that they worked, Mr. Hein worked really hard to get the dance and palms and band to be able to be there to support, to really have that full game day experience. That was, I think it really made everybody all that more excited to have, you know, not just the team, but the whole school community represented.
Yeah, it was fun.
It was a true community event, I really thought it was. Alright, twelve, closed session, motion, I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851D to review district safety plan in pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute one, excuse me, 19.851F to consider enrollment application of expelled student.
I move. Second.
Alright, I think we need a voice call. Voice call.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Yes.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Yes.
Dr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Beer?
Yep.
I vote aye. Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
We are in closed session.